The WebEx is now live.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Welcome back. I know. Welcome to the Cumberland County Board of Education Committee meetings. We have all committees today. And first, I would like to welcome Dr. Bracy. As he works. So we will start with Mrs. Brown with Auxiliary Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we're gonna start with Auxiliary Services as Mrs. Jones, Chair Lady, just said. One oh one, we're gonna call to order. That would be Jacqueline Brown, myself, as Chair, Susan Williams, Greg West, and Dr. Tara Jordan. One oh two, can I get a consider adoption of the agenda? Move to adopt. A second.
Second.
Okay, that would be, uh...
We had new instructions, but I forgot what they were.
Motion by Ms. Williams and second by Dr. Jordan. Let's vote. Thank you. One oh three, consider approval of the May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five Auxiliary Service Committee meeting, uh, meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'd like to, I think, make a motion to approve the May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five Auxiliary Services Committee, Committee Meeting Minutes.
Any one second?
Second.
Okay, so that would be approved by Mr. West and second by Ms. Williams. Let's vote.
That's your end.
All right, uh, one oh four, receive special recognition.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Now, we're gonna call up, uh, Ms. Donna Fields. She's gonna have our Operations Employee of the Month for July and August.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, um, so first, I'd like to just let you know that the Employee of the Month for, um, July had a doctor's appointment in her office this morning. But his name is Demetrius Carroll, and he is a ground truck driver. But with me this morning, I have Mr. Tyler Allen. Come on up, Tyler. Tyler is a member of our carpentry team. He is a carpenter one. He works on the concrete crew and the bleacher crew.
Oh, wow. Good morning.
Just saying this morning, there's a lot of bleachers down here. I certainly are. So Tyler has been with Cumberland County Schools since twenty twenty three, and he began as a carpenter apprentice. He was promoted to carpenter one, um, last year. He is from Cumberland County and a graduate of Westover High School. Prior to CCS, he worked for Terminix, and he was a cook at the local restaurant for fifteen years. Doesn't seem to be quite old enough to have done that for fifteen years. In his free time, of course, Tyler loves to fish, and he likes to kayak. He enjoys kayaking on Lake Rim. His favorite thing about his job is that he gets to travel throughout the county and work at all the schools instead of just being assigned to one district. So Tyler is an outstanding employee, and we appreciate all the hard work that he does. So congratulations for Employee of the Month for August twenty twenty five. Huh? Well, it's okay. Oh. Okay, one more.
Mr. Bracy.
The Dr. Bracy.
Dr. Bracy supposed to be over there.
Nice to jump in.
Okay, continuing on, one point zero five, consider approval of the agreement with FSU Dining Services to provide meals for Cross Creek Early College and Cumberland International Early College for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Okay, I'm gonna invite Ms. Mayner to come up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome back.
Yes.
So at, um, FSU, our two early colleges that we have on campus, uh, they actually use their dining halls to provide the meals to the students. They do, uh, they do not provide us a space where we can actually, uh, provide the meals that we prepare. So we were, we're appreciative of their offer. They actually prepare the meals according to our USDA standards. We, um, have the right to review their records and to make sure they're in compliance. They serve the meals, but we actually send one of our staff members over to actually process the students through our point-of-sale system, which means those students still get to participate in the free and reduced meal program. We, we pay FSU for the bu, for the meals and then turn around and file for reimbursement from USDA. So we collect any money from the full-paying students. And basically, it's a partnership or arrangement. They actually charge us more than what it would cost us if we were, uh, producing it, but it works out in the long run, and we make sure those students are eating healthy meals. So we're asking that you extend, uh, the contract for this year. The only price increases, they tried to go up on us, but we negotiated with them. And they went up on the adult meals and on the mi, individual milk and juices. But otherwise, they're keeping our student meal costs the same. So I'd appreciate it if you would consider approval of this contract.
Questions or comments? I have a question, or maybe more so of a comment. You said that they charge you a little, cha, charge us a little bit more? Is that because they are actually serving the meals instead of us?
They actually buy the, buy the product, prepare it, and serve it. So we would do the same if we...
Right, we would have to send workers over there to do it.
They're profit-based.
Okay.
So, um, uh, to be quite honest with you, they want to charge a dollar and something for a meal. We charge seventy-five cents for it, but it's the same meal.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Greg, you gonna second it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right. Ms. Williams, um, approves. Mr. West, second it. Okay, let's vote. Thank you. One oh six, consider approval to award the re-roofing project at Douglas Bird High School to Hope Metal, Metals and Corporation, twenty twenty five.
Okay, good morning again. This contract for construction is for the re-roofing project that's gonna happen out at Douglas Bird High School. We solicited formally, uh, bids for this, this project, and we had ten vendors respond. Hope Metals, um, submitted the lowest responsive bid with the base contract price of eight hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. They are licensed in the state of North Carolina and have completed similar projects. They have submitted all of their MBE documents, and their bid bond, um, performance and payment bonds will be, will be required for this project. Um, and the scope of work is gonna, uh, include a complete re-roofing of the main building at Douglas Bird High School. So we are asking for your approval to proceed with this project.
Did all the people that, um, all the companies that applied, were they all from North Carolina or were there some from other states?
I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head.
Any questions or comments?
I admit I didn't read the letter, but when you were scrolling by, it says they're gonna subcontract it out to Danny Odom Roofing?
Yes, sir.
So when they subcontract, as you've been a...
Yeah, they're local, I mean, and that's fine.
That's what I was wondering.
I just wonder why. I guess...
Are they not capable of doing the job if they have to subcontract it out?
Well, that's their, that's their prerogative to subcontract it.
So what if they submitted the lowest bid, they probably are big enough to meet the bidding requirements.
Right, so why would they have to...
Odom may not be. But it's fine. I mean, it's probably, it's common.
It may be different.
It's common. That's fine.
So you agree with the grant?
I'm fine with it.
You're fine with it? You're the construction man? You agree with it?
I don't know about that, but I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the re-roofing project at Douglas Bird High School.
Okay. Will we go on? You'll say so on that one. Greg approves, and Ms., Dr. Jordan, second it. Let's vote. Thank you. Consider approval, uh, one oh seven, consider approval of twenty twenty five, twenty through twenty twenty eight inter-local agreement with the Town of Hope Meals regarding the use of their facilities.
Great. So I'm bringing to you, uh, today consideration of three-year inter-local agreement to run through July twenty twenty five through June of twenty twenty eight between Cumberland County Schools and, and the Hope Meals Parks and Recreation. This will allow Parks and Recreation of Hope Meals to utilize the facilities located within the town. The Town of Hope Meals will make, and in turn, will make its recreation facilities available to us as well if, if we choose to use that. This mirrors past agreements, uh, with, uh, Hope Meals Parks and Rec, and it'll continue our strong partnership. We're bringing it to you today to ask for your approval for this three-year inter-local agreement.
I had heard from some, some, some people, should I say, um, we ironed out all the little neeps and stuff that some people were upset about at one time?
Through, uh...
Hope Meals and...
Hope Meals Parks and...
And Parks and Rec with some of the schools?
Yes, ma'am. I haven't heard any, I haven't heard any specific, uh, instances coming to me about Parks and Rec.
I don't think it was all about John Parks and Recs, but I think it was more on the school park with them not, uh, maybe some of the principals had some hesitation about them using their facilities?
Okay, so I've been able to talk with our principals, let them know through this inter-local agreement. I'm following you now, Ms. Brown. Thank you for that. Uh, I've, I've had the opportunity to let them know we're under this inter-local agreement. If we have a reason to use the school and there's a reason that they can't come in, we take precedence always over that. So if there's a school-based function, then we would definitely let them know the answer is no, they can't use it during that time. We've had conversations with our principals, made that very clear.
Thank you very much. Considering when this brought to my attention, I like to address it in a intelligent way. Thank you. Can we get, um, Ms. Warner?
Has the situation with American Legion ball been worked out?
Yes, ma'am. American Legion ball is gonna go through, they'll, they'll go through, uh, uh, Parks and Rec. So Parks and Rec has a junior, senior, li, like an older league that is, is younger than American Legion. So American Legion, through working with Parks and Rec, they'll run through them with their insurance and so forth. So yes, ma'am.
And my caution to you?
Yes, ma'am. Grace Creek and Southview, they would be using either one of those.
Any other questions or comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay, approved by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. West. Let's vote.
That's your end.
Thank you, Linda. One point zero eight, consider approval, I'm sorry, one point zero nine, consider renewal of the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six memorandum of agreement for SRO services with the Sheriff Office of Cumberland County.
Okay, I'm presenting this, uh, between Cumberland County Schools and, uh, the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office. This agreement will provide twenty-four officers during the school year to cover all of our...
Can I skip one? Or unless I'm reading wrong.
Is it bus garage?
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Okay, well, then I was right again. The one point zero eight, I'm sorry, thank you, um, Susan. One point zero eight, consider approval of the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty eight inter-local agreement with the Town of Hope Meals regarding the activity bus.
Yes, ma'am. Under this agreement, Hope Meals will be permitted to use, uh, the activity buses when they're not needed by the school system. They're fully responsible for all costs associated with their use, and the CC activities will always take priority over, uh, will take use over the, uh, use of our buses. The uses of Hope Meals will primarily be occupied during the summer months for camps and program. So they, um, anytime they're in use of activity buses, they're in need of activity buses during the summertime. And this is something that has been done for years. We just wanna codify it with a written, uh, agreement between, uh, Hope Meals and Cumberland County Schools. So this is not something new. This is just a new, uh, agreement I'm bringing to you today, asking for approval.
So this is something, as you reiterated, that this is something that we have been previously been doing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're just making one. Okay, questions or comments? Greg?
Remember it. So we just have, we've been doing it on the side and that was an agreement?
Yes.
And I just scanned it, there's, there's no monetary reimbursement?
Uh, it's, uh, yes, so there will be, um, twenty-one dollars an hour for labor and three dollars per mile for gasoline or for diesel fuel for that. So that would, that would incur the cost with that. They will be our employees that would drive the bus during that time. So, uh, in this particular one, and you'll see Fayetteville, Parks and Rec's gonna have the same agreement here today. So I'm bringing that to you both for Hope Meals and for Parks and Rec of Cumberland County Fayetteville. But they would provide, uh, we would provide the drivers, they would pay for the drivers, pay for maintenance on the bus and for fuel.
On average, how many buses do they use during the summer?
Very little. I mean, it's, it's very few. This doesn't, this is not a big program that they use a lot of. It was, it, it came up this past year. Uh, the request came through. I'll automatically start looking for paperwork, 'cause I wanna make sure we have an agreement in place. And when the agreement wasn't there, we reached out, said we need to codify this.
Well, Kevin, that's one thing I commend you on, being the transparency and bringing all this stuff to the, to the table. Because like Greg has just said, that, uh, we never had that before. It would be new to me, because I'm not actually looking at it that this is something that they had contracts for, and these are things that they're done. So I commend you on that for, um, going the extra mile and doing that, because when it come back and we'd be like, where's the paperwork? We gonna look at you.
Oh, yes, ma'am. That's, uh...
When something happens.
Yeah.
But, um, two things. One, I mean, it's fine. I think it's being a good neighbor. We've got buses, these municipalities don't, and they're idle in the summer mostly with us. So that's, we get some use out of them. But why wouldn't we put the, um, the monetary amounts, reimbursement amounts in the agreement? Or is it not? I'm, I'm scanning it. I didn't see them.
We can certainly put that in there. We've, uh...
Because then otherwise, they would think it was free, huh?
Well, or you could dispute it. If it's not a body, you dispute.
I would think it was free.
The amounts in the, in the process, um, just thought Nick can add that later and clean it up. But I still approve it if it's contingent on that.
Okay, so once they add it, we'll approve it later?
Just see the, the comments. I mean, we can just add up addendum, just a one-page addendum.
And then vote on it later?
No.
We can go ahead and vote on it now?
Vote on the contract. Yes, ma'am.
I think you're gonna add that to that?
Yeah, with the specific.
Is that acceptable?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on it? We're gonna get a motion to approve this contract?
I move that we approve the bus contract for, uh, Hope Meals Parks and Rec.
Second. Okay, so it's approved by Dr. Jordan and second by Ms. Williams. Let's vote. Thank you. Now we can do the SRO vote. This is right. One point zero nine, consider renewal of twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six memorandum of agreement for SRO services with the Sheriff Office of Cumberland County.
This is again with the county, with the sheriff's office with the county, and this will provide twenty-four officers during the school year. Three officers in summer school and then one detective, uh, excuse me, during summer school, those three, uh, officers during summer school, and one detective assigned to support school safety. Want to talk about what is the change from last year? So a change from last year is the removal of the schools located in Spring Lake. If you, we have some new board members, and for those that were there to go back and, and, uh, refresh your memory, that the sheriff said because, uh, the, the, the police force in, uh, Spring Lake is so small, they're unable to provide SROs for that, uh, those three schools in that area, WT Brown, Manchester, and Spring Lake Middle. So the sheriff said last year that he would do for one year would cover that. That one year was last year. They're not able to cover that this year. So, um, that's the change from, uh, last year to this year. As, uh, you will, uh, Spring Lake Police Department is unable to provide a dedicated officer. So we're gonna utilize a security guard at, uh, to start the school year. We're gonna utilize a security guard at Spring Lake Middle, so they have someone present. And then that would also take those two schools. So we'll have a security guard in Spring Lake, because we will not have a sheriff in Spring Lake. We won't have a city officer or a sheriff. So we'll put that there and have nine-one-one support for the Spring Lake schools. But we do wanna put an extra person there, even though it is a, uh, not a sheriff that's gonna be there. It will be a security guard that came up last time, was presented to you. Obviously, somebody with arrest authority. A SRO is better in a school system, in a, in a school that has it there. By this time, we're gonna have to utilize a security guard at Spring Lake Middle. So that would be the change from last year. Bringing that to you this morning, bringing this agreement with you this morning, uh, for your, um, for your approval.
Comments? Any questions?
I hate to be the guy that keeps bringing stuff up, but being a sheriff's rights, not a sheriff anymore, do we need to change the signature line?
I asked that question, I think the sheriff's office, just out of respect for sheriff right, wanted to leave his name on documents until there is a permanent sheriff named. Yes, sir.
I may make a motion to approve the agreement.
Who second it?
I second it.
Okay, Mr. West, make a motion to approve. Dr. Jordan, make a motion to second it. Let's vote.
That's your end.
Okay, one one ten, consider approval of the twenty twenty five through twenty twenty eight inter-local agreement with the City of Fayetteville regarding activity bus use.
This mirrors what we just talked about with Hope Meals. We try to make sure when we're dealing with different entities, we're fair across the board and as consistent as we can. So in looking at, uh, the use of Hope Meals during that time for their use, uh, in the summertime for activity buses, this mirrors that, uh, through Cumberland Parks and Rec. Again, this is primarily during summertime, during camps and different programs they have in the summer. It's very rarely used, although they do use them periodically during the summer. We take precedence over them, and they're responsible for all the costs associated with them. It's just like what we did at Hope Meals. So I'm bringing this to you also for approval, uh, through Fayetteville, Cumberland, Parks and Rec.
Comments? Ms. Warner?
One question is, uh, as I say, I'm thinking about, this contract runs through twenty twenty eight. There's probably a chance of the, of an increase in prices and gas and employees. So it might be put to current rate, but it might be important to put, uh, or rate that applies during that time, 'cause I see with pay raises and with, and with fuel cost, it could go up. Other than that.
Any other comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Williams, approve. Dr. Jordan, second. Let's vote. One point one eleven, uh, one point eleven, consider memorandum of understanding for emergency fuel in the City of Fayetteville.
This is another, uh, this is another, um, one that we've been doing, uh, for our neighbors out of courtesy. And this is something I just wanted to get in writing to make sure that we're, we're completely transparent with everything we do. So this is something that has been done in the past, but I'm bringing today a memorandum of agree, uh, understanding between Cumberland County Schools and the City of Fayetteville for emergency use of fuel only. And so under this agreement, CCS will supply fuel to the city's vehicles and equipment only during emergencies, when the city cannot assess other fuel sources and when emergency operations require extended use of county-owned equipment. This includes, uh, support for like fire trucks, ambulances, emergency vehicles and so forth. Fuel will be delivered by the Cumberland County Schools' fuel, uh, trucks and drivers. The city will pay twenty-one dollars per hour for labor, three dollars per gallon for fuel. And it applies strictly during emergency situations, does not cover their routine use of fuel. So I'm bringing this to you today, uh, for your approval.
I didn't know we had it like that. Did you guys?
I was getting old.
Yeah, I don't... So we, this is something that we have done.
We have done it in the past.
Like, is it, when I, when it's an emergency, we talking about like hurricanes or tornadoes? That's what I was, that's the only thing I could...
Yeah, when it's a major emergency.
I was thinking when other things are shut down and they don't have access to, that's the only thing I could...
During, during hurricane times, we'll do a twenty-four-hour shift in emergency management. There's so many times they'll need, they'll need fuel for whatever, they'll need something, and we just do what we need to do to make sure citizens are safe.
Ms. Mayner, did you want to come out? Comment?
Oh, um, this, I apologize for the inappropriateness, but pre-Kevin time, uh, during Hurricane Matthew, we actually parked fuel trucks behind the hospital, uh, to make sure the hospital generators ran. That was an arrangement we had with emergency.
Don't even get me on the hospital, so... Can we make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, approved by Ms. Williams and second by Ms. West. Let's vote. All righty, um, one twelve?
I didn't vote.
Oh, you didn't vote? You seconded up there, said vote.
That's your end.
All right. One twelve, receive SRO coverage by jurisdiction update.
Yep, just real quickly, as I give you one, uh, every month, uh, we've already been over the sheriff. They're covered all of the schools with twenty-four officers. At this point, PD, uh, excuse me, uh, Fayetteville PD will start on July one. That's the agreement, uh, that, right now, they have nine officers. And again, this is for fifty schools inside the city. They have nine officers in place now. By August thirty-first, they expect to have five more additional officers in place to equal fourteen. And then by January thirty-first, they expect to have four more. That would give us a total of eighteen officers. That would put one in every high school and one in every middle school. And then they would share and, and roam as needed through elementary schools with a combination of security guards as well. So that is for Fayetteville PD. Hope Meals will have five officers for the seven schools that are there. And that's just a very quick update of where we are with our law enforcement.
Questions, comments?
And will the Spring Lake?
Uh, Spring Lake will be covered by a security guard and then nine-one-one, obviously, will help that as well.
One thirteen, consider other committee concerns? Any other committees' concerns?
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Grass, uh, we getting ready to start next school. So when will they go out and make sure that the kids are taken care of before the school starts?
Yes, ma'am. Happy to report our grass is, is doing, doing very well. We started at April first. It's a slow ramp up as we get things in place. Things have been going very well. Things have been getting very much, much better. They know, uh, each one of them has each school's open house, their events or whatever, and they're working around that. They've worked specifically with year-round schools to make sure everything was in tip-top shape for any opening that they have. So they're out there working now every day, and they're working on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, to make up for rain during the week. A lot of times, what we're finding as it goes, it takes a couple days of rain to get everybody backed up, and then we have to get everybody squared away. And that's stuff that they've been very, uh, very mindful of working through with us, working on our communication with our, uh, administrators at the school. Things are getting, uh, much better. And so, uh, the goal is by the time school starts, that everybody, ever, all of the things will be taken care of. That need to be taken care of is just maintaining, going and cutting, edging, and moving on to the next.
So not by the time open houses?
Yes, ma'am. It, that everybody's yard will be prepared for their open house. They know when open houses are coming, and they're working towards that. So they're using that, uh, as their schedule to make sure that it's good for that as well.
So Kevin, it really seems that per our conversation, our private meeting you and I had, that, uh, problems have been rectified with that certain company?
They are currently being rectified. You know, that we are, we started in the month of April, and at that time, um, when we did before, when we started our two, our, our, our test program, we started it in January. So during that time, they were able to get all the things taken care of, the beds squared away and everything edged up, not during growing season. And so then when the growing season starts, then it just kicks everything into place, and it's just maintaining. We started in April, which is right in the beginning of growing season for the remaining eight areas. So it took them a little while to get on their feet, to get their, they have four crews that go out each and every day. And of those four crews, we have, uh, supervisors at Central Services that goes out, and they, they take a look at it and make sure everything's taken care of. We have them every morning sending us exactly where they're gonna be for that day. And we just ask them, this is something we're requiring to them until we get up to where we need to be and we get everything to a base standard. Every morning, they send us where they're gonna be, and we go out and we take a look at it. If there's any change in it, we're constantly working with them. So they're being very receptive, and things are getting much better as it goes. If you run into a situation where, um, they needed to get into, they worked out on a Sunday because it rained all week, and they needed to get into a courtyard, then they're working on getting back over to the school and following back up. They're doing much better on that.
Okay, 'cause that's just business, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
How many, um, companies have we contracted with?
We have two. Uh, we have one that takes care of eight attendance areas and one that takes care of two attendance areas. That's Grace Creek and Southview. It's Cates and Cades is the name of that. That's Grace Creek and Southview is Kate's and Cage's is the name of that one. And G four landscaping takes care of the other eight.
And that was a conversation that Kevin and I had had in a private meeting where that big, the one that had the biggest contract, would he be able to accommodate all the schools? And if not, then we were going to have to break it down and give it to somebody else if it was not being up to our standards. And we were using it as a test run. Kevin and I had come to the conclusion, if they were not able to do this within a certain amount of time, then that we come to the conclusion that we would break it down and give it to somebody else. But you seem to say that it's on the right track right now?
Really looking at, and the conversation we, I've had conversations, both Donna and I and Forster, our director as well, we've sat down and had that, that, those conversations with them to let them know we're looking at the beginning of the school as the marker. Everything has to be completely in place, taken care of. If you go by and it's every single day I go by and look at yards, they're looking so much better. They're looking so much better. So things are going really well. Things are getting much better with it.
And the conclusion that Kevin and I have both come to, that when there's no transparency and there's no communication, you tend to have less grace for people. So as long as you're communicating with us and being transparent, we can allow grace on certain issues and certain things, whether a bed is not done or if it, you know, as you and I were both talking about, certain grasses, fescue tend to grow a lot faster than centipede. So if you ever make sure the fescue is going to be sticking up and if I go by there and I see fescue sticking up and not centipede, I have grace because you and I have both talked about it and I can explain that to a principal or anybody that's calling me and say, look, they're getting there, but you know, you got to realize that you're going to see some fescue up over the centipede. But far as hedges, edges and stuff that, that's, that's just not, you know, that's not acceptable.
That Fayetteville sandy soil with that highway grass that pops up overnight.
Yes, it does. Anytime you get a little bit of rain, it happens. Alright, yes.
We're using the same two companies year after year.
We'll, we'll put it out to bid. It's a one-year bid. So we'll put it out.
One-year contract.
Yes, ma'am. No, it's a three-year contract. It should be a three, it's three-year contract. Three-year contract. Sorry, three-year contract.
So if someone wants to get in on that picture, they can just.
They'll put in the bid and we'll, yeah, absolutely.
If they're not doing a good job, we can go.
That's right.
Because that's why I was always saying, if they're not doing the job, they can get stepping. That's how I look at it. Right, Kevin?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, if they're not, if they're not taking care of business and doing what they need to do, then we'll take steps towards that.
Okay, alright.
Well, you know, there's always conversations with people about how your yards are looking and everything. And to be truthful, some people who are in that business are confused on how you get in to that service. They come to say, gee, gee, um, two people with eighty six students just might not be enough. And to have, um, how much is the contract? I, I'm so confused on stuff here.
I don't have it right in front of me. I can certainly get that for you. I've got it somewhere. I don't have the, the contract right in front of me. What is the contract totals for these two contracts? Do you have that in front of you for G four and Kate and Cage's?
Yeah, so there's actually three separate contracts. One is for Kate and Kate, which is two districts, which I think is about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And then I think the total of the GF landscaping, which is the other eight districts, but two are separate because we bid those first. But I think it's a total of approximately seven hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars.
And as, Ms. Musgrave, as that, as that comes up, we put it out to bid and low, you know, low person wins that bid. And so that's what we, you know, when the bid comes around, it will be a fair and competitive bidding process.
Any other concerns or comments?
I have one more. Painting for this summer.
So we've, uh, we've, we've, we've painted, we're about halfway done with Mac Williams, seventy-five percent done with Douglasburg High School, halfway done with Southview High School. A B Wilkins is about halfway done. Westover Middle School, we're almost done with Westover Middle School. Got a little bit of cleanup to do with that. Jack Brits, about sixty-five, seventy percent done. John Griffin Middle School, Seabrook Elementary, excuse me, not Seabrook, Galberry Elementary is just about done. Alderman Road is just about done. And Lake Rim Elementary is ninety-nine. We got, uh, the, we have a walkthrough that happened a couple of days ago and I need to see if it was signed off on. It should be close to being done. So that's what we've done this summer for painting.
And then we're getting ready to do something else, like get ready to.
Dr. Jordan, get to speak up so we can hear.
Oh, the, and so we'll get ready to try to do something for the Christmas holidays and things like that.
Oh, yes, ma'am. We'll take advantage of anytime students are not there, that's, we'll, we'll jump in there the day they leave. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Alright, if there's no other concern, um, concerns, we'll adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Come on. Come on, ladies. Call to honor Dolores Bell Chair, Jacqueline Brown, Greg West and Susan Williams. One point zero two, consider adoption of agenda. Can I get a motion?
Move to adopt. I second it.
Motion was made by Ms. Williams and second by Ms. Brown. Let's vote. One point zero three, consider approval of May twenty nine, twenty twenty five Student Services, Student Support Services Committee meetings. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Brown and second by Mr. West. Let's vote. One point zero four, consider approval of twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six Professional Service Agreement with Interpreter Network for Sign Language Interpretation Services.
Thank you, Ms. Bell, and we're glad to be back to start this school year. Where Dr. Richard will share this item for consideration.
Good morning to everybody.
Good morning.
Happy August to you and welcome, Dr. Bracy. I like to bring before you a consider item to look at a clock, whatever agreement between the Cumberland County Schools and the Interpreter Network. This is a service agreement for our students. Of course, we are focusing on strategic priority number one. And ensuring that our students have what it is they require as far as the I E Ps. And so this particular contract is providing sign language interpreter services to our students who are deaf and hard of hearing, who, or who are completely deaf. And we've got about four individuals that are going to be working within the schools with those particular students and working alongside them during their classes to provide those same sign language interpreting services. Basically, this company is one that is highly vetted. There are some new requirements for E I P A, which is an assessment that our sign language interpreters have to have. And they must have at least a three point five out of five on this particular assessment in order to be able to provide this service in the schools. And so we're looking to renew for a hundred and seventy-five thousand for this school year in order to make sure that those students are getting those particular services. And it is going to be coming out of our instructional funds. So consider your approval.
Any questions?
I make a motion to approve the.
I just want, how many interpreters do we have?
So overall, right now, we are looking at about ten over the entire district where we've got two that are direct hires and everybody else is contracted.
So that was, that was the other contract that we, we agreed on earlier.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. This one has four?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Okay, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the Sign Language Interpretation Services Agreement.
Nice. Go ahead. Susan, second then.
Okay, Greg West made the motion and Ms., Mr. West made the motion. And Ms. Williams made the second. Let's vote.
So I'd love to share some additional information, let's go in reference to just an update. On the last time we were together, I brought a contract in front of you all for contracts with homes to get cameras. And I wanted to let you all know that that work is moving along beautifully. First phase has begun and we are beginning to put cameras in our exceptional children's extensions classrooms. Got email yesterday from a couple of principals that they have already been installed and we are working to get the first phase complete, which is ten schools. And then we'll move to get all the rest of them taken care of, totaling out to eighty-seven. So just wanted to let you all know that that work is beginning and is beginning to progress.
Okay.
Thank you. Questions or concerns?
Not about that.
Okay.
But I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I noticed that we're, we're kind of behind on testing out kids that parents have requested. And I'm wondering, are we going to try to do a better job this school year than we did last school year?
Absolutely, we are. That is one of those things that is an ongoing concern for all of us. And we've put several things in place to address. We just came up off of our Indicator eleven summer teams and we were able to move over two hundred meetings to get done over the summer months for these six weeks that we were out. And so that's one of the strategies that we put in place. I just sent out a great email to our team thanking them for their willingness to participate and actually give their time over the summer to get that taken care of. We're consistently working with contractors, trying to get people on board to get evaluations completed for students. And I would like to, to say that from last year to this year, we were at about twenty-one percent proficient when it came to our Indicator eleven and we were able to double it this past year. So it is a work in progress and ultimately, you know, we are moving in the right direction. And we are definitely prioritizing those that are brought to our attention to make sure that we can get them done in the time of fashion.
Okay. Is that okay, Ken? Alright, um, let me see what we get. Uh, one, let's see today.
One point oh five.
One point oh five, consider approval of twenty twenty five, twenty six, make, make, been the random of understanding with the friendly dental van to provide services for the students.
And Ms. Bolden will be.
Thank you.
Coming to present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Should be, Mr. Joseph's working on it. If you want to, go ahead, maybe just start from your.
Alright, so just to give some background, we began with the friendly dental van back in two thousand and ten with our School Health Advisory Council. We noticed that we had a lot of children in our district who did not have a dental home. And so as we began to do some research, we found the dental van and we moved forward with them. It is at no cost to our district. Students are provided with a safe setting on the bus. They can watch a movie while they're getting those services. They provide a space for parents who wish to visit during their child's treatment. Oftentimes, parents stay at work because that's the beauty of being able to have it taken care of at work, at school. We have designated school personnel who assist with scheduling and make sure the children get there and miss limited time away from the classroom versus a half day because mom takes a half day, then they got to go to McDonald's. So this way, they're there and they're back in the cafeteria eating our yummy lunches. And then our school personnel also assist in collecting whatever documents we need from the family and giving the information back. We are really excited that we continue with this because we've seen the large number of kids who have cavities that were untreated. The next thing we want to talk about is their report card. So the kid is going to, well, let me, let me back up. You can go, I'll go where you're at. Alright, so the, we had last year a hundred and five sessions across fifty-five schools. And some schools required multiple visits to get all the dental treatments completed. Throughout those sessions, we had around three, thirty-three hundred students who were scheduled benefiting two thousand two hundred and thirty-seven students. Now, that's approximately eight hundred students who missed their services either because they relocated to another district or they were absent. Each student who was treated on the van got x-rays, fluoride treatments and any necessary cavity care. Each student also received sealants so to protect them from getting future cavities. The successful completion rate for us, I always want to look at our care secure is fifty-two percent. We're hoping to see that higher this year. But students who require further treatment beyond when the dental van is here, we do have a partnership with a local dentist here. So if we have any emergencies, we can get them cared for in the absence of the van. Okay, now, every student who visits the dental van gets a dental report card each time. This dental report card goes home in their backpack, but how many folk we know that they lose it? So we also mail that home and the dental van takes care of getting those home to the families. So they all get this report card. Parents have, if you're not there, you still know what your child's dental status is for that treatment. And then the schools get a report card. So we let them know, hey, today we scheduled, we, we didn't see fourteen. We ran out of time for however many. We had this amount were absent, these kids were withdrawn according to your staff. These are the numbers we treated. These are the kids who need additional treatments. It just really gives the principal a good overview and the school nurse of what the status is of their children. Any questions about the friendly dental van? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Well, first, first I'd like to attest to the friendly dental van because when I was at the middle school, I was the one that did all that. That van really nice, I want to go up in and get my teeth done. I mean, they really do a good job. My question is, do you get a little bit hesitation from, I mean, okay, what's your biggest clientele? Is, because they do highs, they do all three.
Well, we.
Elementary and middle, middle and high, right?
Yes, we began at the elementary. And then we had so many parents as there's kids who were transitioning to middle school saying, hey, I want to continue the service. And so now we have kids going into high school, we have kids in high school. So we're growing every year. The secondary level, we are looking to increase our numbers there. Because they still need that good dental health.
That's correct. And so if the parents, do you find that you get some hesitation from the principals or the staff there? You know, because sometimes they're like, oh, that's something else to do, you know?
Actually, um, the opposite. I've had some secondary principals reach out to me and say, hey, I need this in my building.
Right.
So I think our district as a whole is open to the health and wellness of our children. And they see this as another way to keep them in the building so that we can see that academic growth without them missing that.
Because one of the things I really liked is that, that it was there, they didn't have to check out, come back, miss a whole half a day. And then when they came back, they weren't going to do anything anyway. But this way, they got to go in there, do that little bit of dental work and then they go back in class. Fantastic, going to comment you on that. And Greg, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Remind me how it's provided at no cost to the district.
So it's no cost to the district because if the parent has insurance, like they will apply, they complete all that with the dental van. So they complete their insurance. If there's a kid who doesn't have any care, we will assist them with seeking the uninsured child, but they also will see a child who is uninsured.
But isn't that with Medicaid?
Yes.
So the biggest.
But some of our kids don't have it, either their parents, one of the biggest challenges is that they let it lapse. They forget to renew. And so sometimes we have to step in and help them get that paperwork together.
I know it's been going on a while, but I'm admiring the, the setup. Is friendly dental unique to Cumberland or is it a larger program throughout many districts?
Friendly dental van actually began in two thousand and two. It is based out of Charlotte, North Carolina. I saw it at a conference and decided that we needed it. And so they serve many counties here in North Carolina, but we're one of the larger counties that take advantage of it.
Cool, thank you.
And any questions, any other questions? Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the friendly dental van service agreement.
Second. Okay, a motion was made by Mr. West and second by Ms. Williams. Let's vote. One point zero six. Thank you, Ms. Bolden.
So the next item is approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six School Mental Health Improvement Plan, which has to be submitted to D P I by September the fifteenth. And so Dr. Scott will present this item. Good morning.
Good morning.
Leave my spectacles.
All right, so S H L T oh oh three, this is state borne policy, simply called school mental health policy. Um it actually does align with our, the district strategic plan, priority number three, which directs us to develop a behavioral and mental health framework. Uh just to tell you a little bit about the history of the of this particular policy. In June of twenty twenty, the General Assembly um passed a law that required the state board to act, to adopt a school-based mental health policy. And then based on that, school districts were to adopt and implement a school-based, school-based mental health plan and began implementation by July of twenty twenty-one. So November fifth, twenty twenty, state board did adopt the school-based mental health policy. And so the plan that I'm bringing to you um is making sure that we're in compliance with that. This is our second cycle. Um outline here are the components of the plan. Um in the statute itself, it outlines what what goes into the plan, the annual reporting requirements. And every five years, there is a review cycle. So it started in twenty twenty, now we're in twenty twenty-five, so we update our plan. Um DPI can audit plans to ensure compliance. Um it needs to be signed and reviewed by the board, um and signed by the board chair, submission to DPI by September the fifteenth. So throughout the rest of the presentation, just trying to give you a balcony-level overview of what's actually included in the plan. I don't think any of this information will be new to you. Uh we had a fall update on the school mental health initiatives. So this is an overview of a lot of information that you've been hearing all throughout the year. Um but just to talk specifically about the plan components. Uh it begins by asking us to do an assessment and look at the strengths and needs of the district. It asks us to provide an outline of the existing S E L and mental health prevention initiatives that are already in place to describe what the building and alignment of the infrastructure that's in place to allow these mental health initiatives to happen. Um it also asks us to monitor our specialized instructional support personnel. In Cumberland, we've referred to them as student services, counselors, social workers, and psychologists. Um it directs us to align our S E L and mental health initiatives with the academic objectives. There was a recent policy on physical activity in the classroom for high school students. Um and so they're using the mental health plan to get an update on that information as well in terms of how districts are making, are implementing that. There was an elementary component already in place. It wants to know how we evaluate our school mental health initiatives, our early intervention initiatives as it relates to mental health, and then also speaking to how we manage treatment, referral, and reentry. So I want to add, although I may be sharing this information, mental health involves everybody, it's a lot of different departments. All of the work in this plan is not done by the Student Services Department. There are lots of things that are done by curriculum and instruction, um and and various human resources, a lot of safety and security, a lot of different departments. Um it takes all of us to make this happen, is what I'm trying to say. Some of the additional plan components. Um it also directs us to create a mental health training plan and to attach that to the template that's provided by the state. They request a copy of our suicide referral protocol. Um they don't ask for a copy, but they do want to ensure that we have a memorandum of agreement in place with the L M E or M C O. L M E or M C O for this particular area is Alliance Health. Um and then in the appendix, we just added some supporting documents to help to make sure that they understand all of the narrative. So some of the strengths in our plan i- in terms of what's happening with the district. The school mental health support team, which has been in place since about two thousand and eighteen. We started that program with grant funding, and that's how we funded it all along the way. Uh referrals for those five ladies in the very beginning, when we started the program, it was about a hundred and seventeen referrals a year. They are now receiving close to five hundred referrals, and every year it's going up. But those five ladies now receive close to five hundred referrals a year. The school behavioral health um program where we have uh mental health providers providing um outpatient counseling during the school day. That program exceeds over four hundred referrals a year. Um our K through five students demonstrated growth in all six core areas of S E L. That's used in the new curriculum that you approved for last school year, Wayfinder and Satchel Pulse. Pre-K through eight schools that implemented S E L curriculum with high fidelity actually saw decreases in their office discipline referrals. The Say Something Reporting App that Safety and Security manages. When that program rolled out, it was during the pandemic, and that kind of disrupted their enrollment, um their rollout of the program. So in that initial year, um there were forty-six referrals and tips in twenty twenty-one. But when we looked at the data for twenty twenty-five, it was up to over a thousand. And our Human Resources Department has made our employee assistance pr- program available to staff since twenty twenty. Some of the needs that we looked at, um just thinking specifically about the halt to federal funding. Um and that the freeze, unfreeze, freeze, unfreeze. So consistent funding of mental health initiatives and personnel, I think every district would say that. Um another one was prioritize and strengthen the instruction of time management, work ethic, and critical thinking skills. This came specifically from that Hanover study of our, where they surveyed our seniors, graduating seniors. And that was one of the findings in that study that the seniors said they wanted more preparation and more study around time management, work ethic, and critical thinking skills. Greater consistency in the implementation of our tier one and tier two um pre-K through eight S E L instruction and targeted professional learning to improve um fidelity of the S E L instruction and make sure that it's aligned to our standards. So the second component was to outline our mental health and pre- prevention initiatives. So here, again, a high-level overview, there are certainly more programs than this. In our supporting documents, we lay them all out, but for the major one, we just listed the major ones here in this particular presentation. The ones that you ask us the most, that we talk about the most. In terms of building alignment and developing an infrastructure, as I mentioned, the plan itself is aligned to the district's strategic plan. Um engagement with a strong S E L and mental health prevention network. So although we do not have uh M O U in place with Alliance Health, they are a strong partner with us. And we utilize them to help us to vet the providers that are in our school behavioral health program. And these are the providers that we use. Um at our last committee meeting, you all approved for us to move forward with Hazel Health. So with the implementation of Hazel Health, we'll now provide school behavioral health to all schools um in the district. The CISP ratios or the Student Services Staff, that's referring to the ratio of counselors and social workers, psychologists to individual students. When we've had additional funds in Cumberland County Schools to hire additional counselors and social workers, the district has always stepped up and put its, put its money where its mouth is. So as a result of the pandemic, we added about a hundred extra positions. That S R funding has gone away. But one thing that Cumberland County School did that other districts did not do, rather than just remove all of those positions at once, they were phased out so that we could, through attrition, make sure that folks were in a position. And also to help schools prepare for that adjustment of not having all of those additional staff. So we're still working to meet the national recommendation in terms of ratios. But the district, again, when the money, when the money is there, when the opportunity is there, we have provided those positions. We have the mental health training plan in place, we utilize Vector Solutions. Another thing that's really unique about our plan is the partnership with Human Resources. So those classes, there are six classes that the plan dictates that staff must receive instruction in. And it's tied to the new hire packet that's offered through Human Resources. That's really good because that ensures that right through that hiring process, that staff, as they're learning about bloodborne pathogens and all those other requirements, that they get those courses right up front. Um and then we have a suicide risk and referral protocol. We utilize the Columbia Suicide Severity Risk Scale or the C S S R S. What is unique about that is that we divi- we implemented that plan along with Cape Fear Valley Behavioral Health. At the time, there was an initiative that we were really looking for, emergency services and all providers to use that same scale. So that meant if we uh recommended to a family that they visit the emergency department and the family was talking about the C S S R S, that was also the same tool that the hospital was using, that a first responder was using. Your C I T officer through law enforcement, that we would all have that common language and be on the same page. So that was just kind of a gentleman's agreement that we made amongst ourselves, and we've carried that on for many years. The reporting of the plan, we do report um compliance with the policy requirements every year through the Healthy, Healthy Active Children's Report. Um this year was new is that they added an annual report to elect quantitative instances, counts of the specific tasks that our counselors, social workers, and psychologists complete. So last year was a, was a practice run, but beginning this year is official. But we're ready for that because we did participate in the practice run, and we will be ready for the annual submission on September the fifteenth. Um aligning with academic objectives. Uh I'm going fast because there's so many components, just trying to uh give all the information. For the S E L, Wayfinder and Satchel Pulse, um teachers do provide the instruction for that. However, counselors and social workers do support their efforts by working with smaller groups of students who need um a little additional support through like small group counseling. They also help teachers with with the implementation, and they do teach them whole class lessons as well. We assess uh Wayfinder and Satchel Pulse two times a year. And then we also have the S E L counselor along with Ms. Newitt, the counseling coordinator, who makes school visits, do classroom observations, work with the individual school teams to assist them with the implementation of S E L. Physical activity in the classroom. So our board policy, number sixty-one forty, the first part of the policy, kindergarten through eighth grade, that was already in place. It requires schools provide a minimum of thirty minutes daily of moderate to vigorous physical activity for K through eight students. But with the policy that came out this year, we added ninth through twelfth grade, who are required to receive sixty minutes of physical activity weekly. Um there was a very beautiful document put together by um instructional programs that outlines to our schools activities that they can use um to meet that sixty-minute requirement. It breaks down the policy. Um and Ms. Cassandra Loud, Ms. Cassandra Straub-Malloy, along with Mr. Chad Barber, will work with our health and P E teachers to disseminate that information to the schools. Evaluation of the school mental health initiatives. You heard me mention the school mental health support team, that is a team of five ladies. Those five ladies were counselors and social workers prior to becoming a part of the team. Each one of them tracks, um keeps up with a database that we keep of our major school mental health initiatives. We work as a P L C, and each month as we meet, we look at the data from those programs. We look at gaps in services, make sure that students are being identified with services. We look at the usage, but we also develop SMART goals around those programs and then evaluate at the end of the year if we met those SMART goals or not. Um and then some programs like Alongside, Wayfinder, Satchel Pulse, and Say Something. Those programs are electronic and they have a dashboard in place. So you can look at the dashboard to look at the usage, whereas the programs at the top, those are things where we created um a spreadsheet and a process for collect, for collecting data on our own because it didn't come with something already in place. The early intervention component of the plan. Um we have been implementing universal screening in the district using VIMAs. You can also look at student outcome data like attendance, discipline, um academics, M T S S structures. We do have a, a system of tier support. Our crisis policy, safety and security updates, our um manual each year. There is a component in there specifically to the suicide protocol, which is where that is housed. Um Dr. McLean leads the effort of reviewing the discipline data monthly and more than that, constantly, daily. Um and involvement in community emergency preparedness plan. I thought it was apropos here, Mr. Coleman mentioned this morning, for example, the agreement to work with the city for um fuel during emergency and disasters. That's a perfect example of how we work with the larger structures of the city to make sure that we are prepared as a, as a county, as a city for disasters. And then the last component of the plan is treatment, referral, and reentry. So we do have a day treatment program that's led by our exceptional children services program. We have our school behavioral health program, and we have small group counseling such as um Sparks and Bounce Back. And we also have the Alongside platform. In terms of uh referrals, our school mental health team are critical in terms of going into the schools and supporting the implementation of the various initiatives. I did, but they also work directly with students and parents as well. Um we also have our community providers. And then for reentry, uh with the school mental health team, something that you may or may not know is one of the things they focus on is transition back to school. So we have a relationship with the district court counselor. And we just chat periodically just to find out, are there any kids that you know of that are going to be coming back to the district from a Y D C? If if they know, and when kids are coming back, they know who those kids are and to invite us to that transition meeting. So we have a member of the school mental health team. I also attend myself if time permits and find out who that kid is coming back, where they're going to be going. So we can go ahead and prepare the school and help the parent with getting that student enrolled, finding all their credits, getting them in the right placement in the district, getting the information to Dr. McLean so she can go ahead and approve where that student will be, will be enrolled at. We also look at things like day treatment, and students from the day treatment program also have a transition meeting um as they enroll back in school. And so the school mental health team is, is used with those transitions. An area that we'd like to work with more are students that are coming back from a residential placement, like a hospital, a psychiatric state. Those are harder to to know who those kids are because they can be coming from anywhere. But that's the area that we would like to have more involvement with, starting with the adolescent psychiatric unit at Cape Fear Valley. All right, that is the plan. Um we have submitted a copy for your approval. Questions?
Yes. Have you seen increased usage with um the Alongside app this past school year?
We did. When we initially started the program, the count was two hundred and thirty-four students. When we rolled it out in February of two thousand and twenty-four, at the end of last year, it was nearly two thousand students. Parent ref- parent permission, though, was about ten thousand.
Yes.
Just a comment, um it's really impressive to see what's being done. And and the thing that um is really, it touches my heart, honestly, is that we still, it's it's for everybody. I mean, you're monitoring out, but you still have that personal one-on-one when you can. We're not letting the one child go to the side just because, well, that wasn't in the group. And I really appreciate that because one child matters.
Yes, ma'am.
And so just hearing the way you you're doing the follow-up with the court system or the, wherever they're coming from is very impressive, and I really appreciate it. That's what I want to say.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Um you said something about sixty minutes of physical activity for the high schools. How are you going to be tracking that?
So I would actually have to defer to our instructional program. Um I'm not the one. We we can, we can get back to you on that. That is a, it's a partnership with um activities, student activities, which is actually the academic services.
So it's gonna be, this this is sixty minutes, that's gonna be for middle school and high.
Just high school.
Just high school for sixty minutes.
For the week.
For the week, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and so the conversations that I know that we have had is about embedding um time with like in the big, or in the beginning or middle of a class period um each week, so that it adds up to sixty over a period of time. So not a whole six, that's how the, the conversations that we've had. Um so, but we can bring more detail on how we're rolling that out collaboratively.
So you, so when you said, so embedded into, into a classroom, so say like they're taking five minutes just to get up and move or something like that?
Correct, yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I would like to.
Yeah, so we can share, I'll work with the academic services to have them. What we're gonna share immediately is the guide that they put together for um for the schools, and it outlines what the policy is. It gives them examples of, they can break it down, ten minutes per day, sixty minutes all in one day. A, a gym class would do it for some students, but you know, in high school, everyone doesn't take gym. Um and then it gives them e- examples of specific activities. You know, they don't have to stick with that, but it gives them some activities um of how they could use it for a bell ringer. You know, that kind of thing in order to make that happen. But to speak in depth about it, I don't want to.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm trying to, and these people are doing credit hours, so I'm just trying to, maybe it's just me.
It used to, no, it used to count when you change classes. Literally, we counted, I remem- we've been, that was been going on a long time. We literally counted the minutes in between. If it was five-minute class breaks, they counted that up so that we could get that in. And I won't tell you what I thought about that, but I mean. So that we could get that in and I won't tell you what I thought about that, but I mean, it was necessary because. And they took away our children having P E all year, which is another thing I won't get into today, how I feel about that. Then coming from the music person, they need that physical activity, but anyway.
Miss Musgrave, they miss one.
Thank you. You don't want a social worker who can't talk, right? It was forty four pages by the time I finished putting the district's plan together, so certainly after I typed all that. Um, I should be able to sit here and just have a conversation without you um, listening to me read those, read those slides, so.
My question is, so often we get reports of instances. That fall under these categories that happen in schools and what it says to us is. Will be handled by disciplined school, will be handled by, but we never get the follow up, so is your data. Such that we could know how effective this has been and how some of these instances that are occurring. Are treated, because I'm just wondering, we never know what happens to them. There were sometimes it might not be disciplinary, it might need to be something, mental health problems. The other thing that's concerning to me is, are we following up on how often these are reoccurring? And are we being accountable to is this work really working? Because that's something else I see that we we make pretty programs, we make pretty data. But are we actually seeing results and that's where, you know, with a number of instances that we saw last year, um. I'm just, and a lot of times we didn't know, we only got student, we didn't know that maybe that was the same student over and over. Um, so that that's been my concern is, is it really working and if we have data to back that up?
So two parts to that, I think you're I think you're referring to. The emails that come out through the safety and security office anytime law enforcement or ambulance goes out. Um, so that is tied more specifically to the safety and security office and that's. Any and everything that's happening in the district, um, myself, Shirley Bolden, Dr. McLean, Mr. Soika. As those emails have come out, we're all on it and like for myself, anything that comes through that, comes through that um, through my email. And it has something that touches student services, then I have someone from my office or someone from that school mental health team. To follow up with that school and find out what's happening with that, um, sometimes the specific questions that I want to know. Did they remember to call that into child protective services, that sounds like this to me, can you follow up and just make sure? That they know what they're doing and is there any additional support that we can provide? So I don't keep data on those specific things, but the school mental health programs like sparks and bounce back, those are two. Um, small group counseling programs that are research based, but can I provide data on those programs? Yes ma'am, I can, so like with sparks and bounce back, we implement the S D Q which stands for, I'm looking at Ms. Musgrave like Natasha can talk. Okay, we implement the S D Q which is the strengths and discipline questionnaire, we do a pre and a post. We created a smart goal around those two particular groups to evaluate the overall wellness of the student. At the beginning of the group and at the end, and so then we looked at the data over the last couple of years. So one of the things that we saw from last year was that students average a decrease in one point, meaning. Their overall wellness increased at the end of that small group. So then we said, okay, well, if it was about one point last year, then this year we want to see if with our implementation of the program. Can we get it to go down to two points? Now, bounce back was the very first year of the program, but it's a similar elementary version of the sparks program. So with bounce back, for example, we saw one point five decrease. With sparks, we saw a two point two three, so we exceeded our goal in both of those areas. For the school mental health team, we also created a goal for them, we looked at how well the program is being used. We looked at whether or not the program was being utilized more in our tier one and tier two pay schools, which they are, which is where I asked them to spend. You got five ladies, you got eighty six schools, you gotta prioritize where they go. So part of it was looking at is the majority of their time spent in the tier one, tier two schools. It is, but then we also set a goal, I think you heard Ms. Bolden talk about care secured. Meaning that when you made a referral to the family, I gave you the information, but did they actually go? And at least have one appointment with the agency. For that one, uh, we set a goal of seventy or eighty some percent that families would actually secure the goal. And they maintained data on that all year and we actually met that goal. So for those uh, four or five programs, sparks, bounce back, the school mental health team. And school behavioral health, for those programs, uh, we keep data on all of them, but we prioritize those. And I use those five ladies to look at that data and every month we we talk about it, we have a spreadsheet. As the executive director at any point, the amount of money and time that we put into bounce back and sparks. I should be able to pull up a spreadsheet and be able to say, these are the kids that are in these programs. And although those programs don't come with those things, we develop those mechanisms and we put them in place. We also use our um, all grant, the mental health, the big five million dollar mental health grant where we partner with R T I. We also use them to provide some training specifically to the school mental health team to support. What I would have provided in terms of how do you work with data and how do you report that data, that kind of thing. So we work very actively and so those kids, to tie that back to your initial conversation. Those kids that are coming through because they've had some incidents for safety and security. They may or may not be in a sparks group, a school behavioral health. However, when I send the school mental health team or a member of my leadership team out to go and say. Hey, what was that, what happened with that, do we need to be involved with that? That certainly is the opportunity to bring them in if they are not already involved with some of the programs that we have to offer. So I hope that answers.
Yes, thank you. Yes. Are teachers and staff um, using the support services that are out there for them, have you seen increased or decreased or pretty much stayed the same?
So for the, I don't monitor so deeply with the staff. There is some data that can be pulled, to raise, pull some information together for us on the employee assistance program. And honestly, I have to go back and take a deeper look at that, I don't know if you have it off the top of your head. But we can provide you some data with the uses of the employee assistance program. But my department primarily looks at student usage of programs and not staff. Any more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the school mental health improvement plan.
Second. Motion been made by Mr. West and second by Ms. Williams.
Get my chance.
I still got some breath left for a few more words, Mr. Um, Mr. West. I know, I I I took it as such, thank you.
It was in here about the alongside app.
Alright. One one four zero seven, consider approval of the twenty twenty five twenty six attendance. Awareness month proclamation.
Thank you, Ms. Bell, I will try to be concise. I am not Pam's story, I will present this on her behalf, she is actually attending or participating in a new student services orientation. On which is in day two today at South, sorry, Terry Sanford High School, we have about thirty new student services employees that we're bringing into the district. Alright, so we are seeking approval of proclamation for September as attendance awareness month. Um, we seek to continue our campaign of every minute counts here in the district. Um, there are about five major initiatives that will be involved in this campaign for the month of September and throughout the year. Um, the first is a C C S marketing campaign toolkit, which was developed by a communication that includes posters and graphics. And consistent messaging that schools can use throughout the year to stress the importance of um, students coming to school. Uh, we have also reached out to external community partners, um, to include the city of Fayetteville and the county of Cumberland to join us in. Um, the proclamation and um, having September as attendance awareness month. Um, at the district level, uh, we have an attendance team that will be monitoring um, school attendance each month. Um, so that we can recognize those schools that are seeing positive increases in student attendance. Um, but also identify any trends or areas of concern so we can figure out how we can better support. Uh, those schools and those students and families, um, and during the week of September, the eighth of September, the twelfth. We are having a spirit week in which we're going to have some themed days to include um, soc- crazy soc day. Um, wear your favorite jersey, favorite sneakers, just putting some things in place to excite students around the idea that coming to school is important as as we kick off the year. And then we will have full implementation of the revised attendance policy that was approved last. Um, year, we began partial implementation with our high schools in the January, the spring of last year and so as we're beginning a new school year, we are working with. Our schools and communicating with families, um, the requirements of that attendance policy. And so we are seeking approval of the proclamation for September as attend as attendance awareness month. Um, to emphasize again, attendance is essential for academic growth. That it's important that our staff are accurately reporting and we are consistently monitoring student attendance. Um, and that we're putting in intervention and prevention strategies to um, make sure that students are in school because we know when they miss school, they're missing out. Um, and if this weekly directly impacts their um, academic achievement.
Alright.
Do we have the data on on what our results for attendance were for this past school year?
We'll be looking at that, I don't have that in front of me now, we will pull that data, you know, last year we transitioned from power school to infinite campus and so. We were at a a quite of a learning curve and being able to make sure we were pulling accurate information, so we will be pulling that as we begin. This year and we know more about what reports we need to pull and we can definitely share um, updates as we look at that beginning this um, this fall. In comparison.
Any more questions? Can I get a motion? Uh, motion was made by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Brown, let's vote. One point zero eight, consider other committee concerns. Are there any? Ladies, y'all did a fantastic job.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
We adjourn.
We need to take a five minute break.
Sorry that was so long, but I enjoyed everything. Five minutes ain't enough.
Is that I need to know?
No, no, no. My neighbor gave me a whole supply of those.
I know.
I'm going to your house and get some. She gave my neighbor, brought them for me like all winter. That's what I ate for in the hospital. Policy Committee?
I'd like to call the Policy Committee to order in Dr. Hale's absence as the chairperson. We have Jackie Brown, me, and Greg West. And I'd like to have a motion to consider the adoption of the agenda.
I make approval to approve the agenda. Is it approval of the meeting minutes? I make a motion to approve. Adopt the agenda, I'm sorry.
I'll second the motion to adopt the agenda.
A motion by Jackie Brown, and seconded by Mr. West. This vote. 1.03 is to consider approval of the May 29, 2025 Policy Committee Meeting Minutes.
I'll make a motion. I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I second it.
All right, a motion by Mr. West, and seconded by Ms. Brown. We take a vote.
Pass it in.
1.04 is to receive essential 6,000 series board policies on support services.
Thank you, Ms. Musgrave, and committee members. Before I begin, I do want to acknowledge that Dr. Hales did have an opportunity. She provided time for me yesterday to review this whole agenda. So I want to thank her for that and also just publicly share condolences for her and her family after the recent loss of her brother. Proceeding with the essential policies, this is the 6,000 series, which are called support services. So you have health services, child nutrition, transportation, and the finance and business function of the school system, all under this policy set. Just to be efficient with your time, I'm going to run through what we've labeled as essential policies just very rapidly, but certainly welcome any comments or questions at any point. The first one that we have is Policy 6120, Student Health Services, which is just kind of the umbrella policy, which describes all student health services, including the mental health services that you've just heard about from Dr. Scott. And this is the policy which specifically refers to that State Board of Education policy that she just shared with you all, and the school-based mental health plan. So that's all in that policy. The next one that we have is 6220, Operation of School Nutrition Services. Again, this is sort of an umbrella policy that just describes the overall requirements of child nutrition under the National School Lunch Program, and provides all those operational standards. The next policy that we've labeled as essential is 6300, The Goals of Student Transportation Services. These are in alignment with state law and State Board of Education policy for the provision of student transportation services. The next policy for your consideration this morning is 6315, Drivers, which describes the requirements for our school bus and activity bus drivers. And I'll just flag for you that in paragraph C on page two of this policy is the requirement that driving a bus be a condition of employment for certain classified positions. Moving along, Policy 6420, Contracts with the Board. This is your basic policy that governs all contracts that are made for and in the name of the Board of Education. You all are the contracting entity. It addresses authorization to enter into contracts in paragraph A. And among other things, it specifies that there be a pre-audit certification on all contracts made in the name of the Board. And you've heard about that in the past from Mr. Tolan. That's your assurance from your finance officer that there are funds budgeted that are available to pay that obligation of the school system. And that pre-audit certification is on every contract covered by this policy. It also specifies that contracts over $90,000 must be reviewed by the attorney, provides a certain limited contracting authority for principals up to $5,000, and ties in all of the other state legal requirements for contracts. The next policy.
I'm sorry, Ms. Nick, what is the $5,000? What's the $5,000?
That's the principal's contracting authority. That's in the bottom, paragraph A, on page one of that policy. And that was recently increased. You may have to help me with that, Mr. Tolan.
It was about three years ago, we raised it. And then anything over that, the area superintendent gets involved, I get involved, and then we have a formal. Well, the under $5,000 is a formal process, but then there's another formal process where other folks get involved outside of the school building.
That was just my personal.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Policy 6430. Again, this is another sort of umbrella contracting policy. And this is the policy this board has reviewed in the past that specifies the $90,000 contracting authority for the superintendent. It also sets forth all of the bidding requirements of North Carolina law and sets out, you know, the different bid thresholds for formal bids, informal bids, and the different dollar limits. It also provides for some very limited exceptions in cases of emergency, you know, when we may have to deal with a natural disaster or something like that and forego the formal bidding process.
And Nick, that $90,000, he just can't just go and use it on his own. He has to go through the process of, y'all bear in mind, what is it for?
Yes, ma'am. Excellent question. You're exactly right. You still, on any contract, you've still got the pre-audit certification from the finance officer. And I will say, just in terms of actual practice, although the policy says anything over $90,000 should be reviewed by the attorney, we basically see everything that comes out of any department through any cabinet member. It doesn't matter the amount. They still get reviewed by our office. The last one in this set is not really a 6,000 policy, but I just added it. It's Policy 7400, which governs job descriptions throughout the district. But again, this one refers to the requirement to serve as a bus driver as a condition of employment for classified positions. And then the specific classified positions are identified in an accompanying administrative regulation that's part of the whole policy manual. But I just flagged that for you all, you know, because I know from time to time, there's conversation in the community about this requirement, but it is embedded in your policy manual. With that, I'll stop. Again, if there are any questions or comments on these particular policies, happy to entertain them. Hearing nothing further on that than Ms. Musgrave, with your permission, I'll move on to, let's see, this will be 1.05. Yes, ma'am. And these are the policies that have not been revised within the last 10 years. I will just say to preface this, you'll note that a number of these deal with health services and specific, you know, functions of health services. The very first one we have is the EpiPen policy in particular. And I want to thank and acknowledge Ms. Bolden. She reviewed a bunch of these policies for us earlier in the summer, just knowing that they were coming up, that they hadn't been revised in some time to make sure that, you know, all of this stuff was in alignment with her expectations, our practice, and the law. So I want to thank her for that. Again, first one is the EpiPen policy. It's one she reviewed. And, yes, ma'am.
Having gone into epilepsy, something that did not happen to me until late in life, and knowing too that someone had to be called. My EpiPen was used. It did not faze me. I had no blood pressure. And really and truly, the fireman that got there and took over. But in a school setting, if something like that happens, you've got to have someone there not only trained, but then know the following procedures. And like right now, I have with me two strong EpiPens, or stronger than I've ever had before. So if you've ever had epilepsy, then they bump you up. I've also got liquid Benadryl. I've got cream to put on. Because what happens is depending upon the number of bites, but they say the severity of this gets worse as you have the first one. Now, keep in mind, my normal response was swelling, hives, and made two trips to the hospital over my entire life. And this one incident, when it kicked in, had not somebody been home with me, I wouldn't be here now. And that's what's really scary about it, because it shuts everything down. And most principals, I think, aren't even aware of that, you know, with the peanut allergies and all the other things. But truly, it is something that I believe this day and time, we've got to be really careful with. And especially in my case, mine is wasps, bees, hornets, even mosquitoes affect me. But in the case of a school system, think how often they might come in contact with something like that on a playground or somewhere else. And you've got to be able to recognize the signs. So I just, I really want to say that this is something that I'm really very firm about, that we've got to make sure if there's a kid with a need, it's got to be there. And they've got to check the date on those EpiPens, because they do expire.
We're glad some of those.
I look, the good Lord must be, there's still purpose for me. But I tell you that had there not been immediate reaction, and it was scary.
There is. And I was a med clerk, so I had to learn how to give that shot. Thank goodness I didn't have to. If you had depended on me for that, you would really in trouble. But we have some, just in case we need it. But also, we have the kids. We have two of theirs. Some of them are too young to carry them around, but some of them aren't. But we had to make sure that those students that did carry them around, they weren't easily persuaded to give them to somebody else, because that has happened.
And probably too, if there's a way of identifying those students without it being, like in my case now, I have a bracelet that underneath that bracelet has everything you need to know. And then there's a, because that little medical alert thing on it, there's something in my pocketbook. But that's something too that anybody that didn't know would not know how to react. So that's why I believe our school system right now, we've got to just protect those kids, but also make sure that somebody in that school knows, and possibly the teachers.
At least three people.
Yeah.
Because you have to have three med clerks.
And I'll just offer, in response to that, I mean, Ms. Bolden is certainly the expert on all this, but I'll just share from my personal experience, whenever I've had some reason to learn about a situation in which emergency care was administered to a child or a child had a pre-existing condition with an individual health plan, I've always been impressed with the thoroughness and completeness of the documentation and the preparation here with this school system. And, you know, having served in other districts, I can tell you, sometimes that is a concern. But I've always been impressed with the way our folks try to anticipate issues with children.
And just not to belabor the point, but just, we had a child just graduated. He went through 13 years in Cumberland County Schools with us, and a peanut allergy. And just from the elementary level with the snacks that they got and being sensitive to that without making him feel isolated, to, you know, high school and sports and all that stuff, that it wasn't, it was a good experience, a positive experience. Now he's on his own, getting ready to go to college, and he's going to have to look after himself.
Make sure he's equipped.
They're all fresh. His EpiPens were all out of there. And he said, do you have one with you? And it was, you know, a year old in his truck glove box. But anyway, that's our problem. But anyway, it was a positive experience with that, so to your point.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Moving along, Policy 6100 is the next one. And this just states the basic goals of Student Health Services in alignment with the general statutes that are cited in that policy. Up here, okay, yeah. 6100. It's just very, very simple and straightforward. Same thing with the very next policy. Very, very short. Just describes very generally the organization of Student Health Services Department. Policy 6131 is one that we hope that we don't ever have to pull out and rely upon, but it is there in case of need. And that's Policy on Do Not Persussitate Orders. Transitioning now to Child Nutrition. 6210 sets out the basic organization of school nutrition services and the line of responsibility inside the school for that. Again, that's all in alignment with federal and state law. 6225 is our policy on free and reduced lunches. Pretty self-explanatory. 6310 now moves us into the transportation area. Again, just very short. Just describes the basic organization of Transportation Services Department. 6325 is one, actually, I'm knocking on wood, I don't recall any conversation about this since I've worked with Cumberland County. But it's a specific policy for student parking. And I think it's got some good features. It highlights that, you know, being able to park at the school is a privilege, not a right. 6400 now moves us back into the Finance and Business Operations side of the House. Goals of the purchasing function. This is just in alignment with state law. And it's good to have a policy that just sets out those requirements. 6401 is one I'm going to come back to. This policy, obviously, it hasn't been revised in some time. It's called Ethics in the Purchasing Function. Just knowing this was coming up, I've used this as an opportunity to basically rewrite and kind of expand this policy, which has not received a lot of notice in the past. But what I wanted to do, and I'm going to bring to you on their later agenda item, is to make it consistent with our conflict of interest policy for the board members who've served for a number of years. You may recall that a few years ago, I think after the pandemic, we actually revised the conflict of interest policy so that Cumberland's is more strict than what the statute or the basic School Board Association policy would require on conflicts of interest when employees handle contracts or have dealings with contracts. The idea, obviously, is we don't want anybody or their immediate family to benefit from a contract with the school system. So the vision that this board had and what's in your conflict of interest policy is that, number one, our definition of what it means to have control over a contract or to be able to affect a contract is broader. So that we say, not only is it the people who make decisions about contracts and sign off on contracts, but it's the people who just handle them to see that they're paid, who process the purchase orders, all of that stuff. And we then expand, or this board expanded the definition of immediate family to include not just spouses and children, but, you know, in-laws and grandparents to try to, you know, weed out any possible question about people handling money or handling contracts on behalf of the school district, and there being some question about a family member benefiting from that. So that's been on the books for some time. So that's been on the books for some time, but you'll see in a few minutes, the rewrite just kind of ties all that into this policy as well. So it basically appears in two places. Participation by hub businesses, historically underutilized businesses, sixty-four oh two. This is a feature of state law. And I know from conversations with finance and auxiliary services, you know, they keep those lists of hub businesses and make sure they have opportunities to bid and submit RFPs. Sixty-four twenty-five, continuing contracts. This just deals with contracts that extend over a period of time. Sometimes districts get into lease purchase arrangements for computers and vehicles and other things. It's governed by that and state law. Sixty-five hundred, goals of equipment, materials and supplies. Just very common sense stuff. We don't want to waste resources. We want to make sure that material, equipment and supplies go to where they're needed, where they can benefit the mission. Sixty-five ten, organization of equipment, materials and supply services. This is just another umbrella policy that describes that internal organization. Sixty-five twenty, use of equipment, materials and supplies. Just that we don't want people using school system property for, other than school system business. Sixty-five twenty-one, personal use of equipment, materials and supplies. Basically makes the same point. Sixty-five thirty-five, or sixty-five twenty-five, I'm sorry. This one is nowadays may seem kind of like a relic of a bygone era because it refers to textbooks and the need to take care of those textbooks and not turn them in, torn up and beat up. But that policy is still on the books to the extent that we do have printed materials out there that we want returned to us. And then sixty-five forty is a kind of an umbrella policy on responding to or handling potentially hazardous materials. It incorporates all the state regulatory requirements. This is another one of those situations where I can tell you in the past, I've always been impressed with how our operations people are on top of any potential hazardous material situation, sometimes, you know, chemistry labs and that sort of thing. You see that come up.
I know you said about the textbooks and I know that's a sort of a relic, but could that be, do we have anything on Chromebooks?
That comes under the acceptable use policy for personal devices for students. So all of those expectations that, you know, you're not going to bounce them off the walls. Or I'll be facetious, but yeah, no, all of that, all of that is in that acceptable use policy. And it's also in that specific little, I don't want to really call it a contract, but the statement of expectations that students and parents sign. So that's all built in under technology. Yes, ma'am, no, it's a good question.
So we don't have a policy on that, like we got textbooks?
Oh, we do. It's, it's, it's under the acceptable use policies under technology. So that's all part of it, you know, that you're going to take care of the device. And then it also goes on to say you're not going to use it to access, you know, bad stuff.
That's what it pairs.
You know, all of those, all of those requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and that would conclude that section, Ms. Musgrave.
Sorry, Ms. Musgrave, sorry.
Nikki went over about the contracts. I know you can't answer it, so someone else will be able to answer it. And I do hear this, and I'm going back to Judy a while back as far as companies that we have with contracts under thirty thousand dollars. Do we utilize those companies? And does anyone know how many? Because we're hearing that they just can't get their foot in the door.
Do you have specific industries or examples that we can? I mean, we can provide the board a list of every contract under thirty thousand dollars, that'd be no problem. But I didn't know if there's a specific ways, because as alluded to earlier with the ruling, sometimes companies don't meet the medium, the minimum standards that we look for in vendors. And in my experience, not necessarily here, but in previous lives, that has been kind of a barrier that I've seen to where you see small businesses can't do businesses, business with local governments. So if there's specific examples, usually what we do is we'll meet with them on a case by case basis to make sure that they fulfill the requirements. And then after that, we cannot influence, you know, if we're doing an informal bid or anything like that. And the process just plays itself out.
I, I was just going to echo what Mr. Tolan just shared. Just from observation over many years now, it seems like insurance requirements and bonding requirements are, are big hurdles for a lot of small businesses who want to do business with government agencies.
But we do sit down and let them know that there are certain things they didn't meet.
Yes, ma'am, yeah, oh, yeah.
Some of them will say that they haven't an idea why they can't get in. All right, well, those were receive items.
Yes, ma'am.
That don't require votes, so we need to move to one zero six. Consider approval of the new policy forty-three eighteen, student use of cell phones and other personally, personal wireless communication devices.
Thank you, Ms. Musgrave. The statute that was ultimately passed and signed into law is up there on the screen. I previously shared that with the board. What I would suggest that we do, again, just kind of in the interest of time, because I know this is a subject, you know, you all have put a lot of thought into and you also reviewed at your work session in June, is to go to the red line copy of the, the policy itself. And I can tie in the way that statute affects the, the initial draft of the policy you saw in June. So we go to the, the red line copy that's got the underlining and that sort of thing of forty-three eighteen. Just begin with page one there. There's a paragraph in blue that just recognizes the fact that there is now a state law that requires this policy. And it refers to the fact that it was bipartisan legislation. That paragraph's not necessary, but I inserted it after reviewing other drafts from other large districts and consulting with other school board attorneys on this because I guess my feeling was we still see our, our, our folks at the building level having conversations, unpleasant conversations, sometimes with parents who don't understand what is our legal authority to control their child's cellphone use. And so the thought, it wasn't original to me, was to just go ahead and insert the statute right at the beginning to make it clear that although this is a policy of the Cumberland County Board, it's still something that's required by state law. So that's, that's the explanation there. If you'll jump down over, or over to the second page, under elementary schools, I highlight the other substantive change or two other substantive changes in this. One is that you see the language that we originally had that owns should be silenced during instructional time for elementary schools, just the whole school day. But middle and high, it's during class time. Instead of silence, the law actually says that phones need to be turned off. So that's why that was changed. And then the other thing, if you go down under paragraph B, for every grade level, elementary, middle and high, you know, if you continue to do this policy, the, the original draft had included that language you see at the beginning of paragraph B that gave school staff some discretion to authorize brief use of a device if there was some, you know, reasonable need for it. The, the final statute that was passed refers to emergency circumstances. And so again, I was actually at a conference where this was discussed two weeks ago. The thought is we need to give some more specific guidance for what that means that school staff have discretion to authorize that brief use. And what the statute tells us is it needs to be a true emergency, an actual emergency. And we add some examples that aren't, you know, exhaustive, but just to, to give actual examples of what some of those situations might be. So those are really the substantive changes on this policy from what you all saw in June. You've been provided with your materials, all of the feedback that was received over the course of the summer. I mean, I think it's great that so many people in the community wanted to weigh in on this. There are obviously folks who see this as kind of contingent on their ability to, to, you know, provide for their children as they want to. But then a lot of other people who are very supportive of the idea that there needs to be more specific restrictions on cell phones in the schools. If, again, I'll certainly entertain any questions or comments that you all have. I am going to ask if this is a, something that the committee wants to go ahead and, and move forward and place on the agenda for next week for the full board. Because of school coming up or traditional calendar beginning so soon, knowing the timing of your September meeting, the fact that you generally require two readings before a policy is effective, there is a provision in your policy on policies that says that you can, in a situation like this, you can approve a policy on first reading and for temporary approval. So that way, again, defer to the board on all this. But if this is the direction you want to go, then it will be effective as a policy when school begins, even though it hasn't gone through that second read.
What's the policy number on what you just reviewed?
Yes, ma'am, good question. For anybody following along at home, it's policy twenty-four twenty. And that specifically refers to temporary approval.
I'm in agreement with the policy and the changes and all of that. My question is for the executive summary, which I think is well written. You know, that's, what's the plan for getting that out widely and repeatedly maybe? Because this is going to be the biggest issue, you know, heading into school. And the better job we do of educating on the front end, the better compliance should be during the year.
Excellent question, and I want to give Dr. Whitley all the credit for that executive summary. That's, that's his fine hand and work on all of that. I mean, I, I think it's a tremendous document. And again, if this is something this committee wants to move forward today, then we're prepared, beginning tomorrow morning in principal's leadership, to roll that out to our principals as their go-to guide. We will follow that with the assistant principals' leadership on Thursday and share the same information with that group. And from then on, I defer to his communications team as to where we go from that. And obviously, what you had in your more docs materials is obviously a draft, but we have the pretty version ready to go, if y'all are okay with that.
This is all good, my man. We do have a toolkit and we've worked with the team, recorded videos, we'll have social media. We have a toolkit for principals to help them roll it out, roll their communication channels. So hopefully it is a Sunday call, I'm not sure.
Cool, very good. I'll make a motion.
Even though we're rolling this out, how are we going to make sure that this for schools? Because, you know, I know some schools are going to do it different than others or however. But I think with this kind of policy, we all kind of need to be on the same accord. So who will be working on making sure that this is going out to our principals and assistant principals so that it's effective for all of our schools to make sure that they're on one accord? I mean, I know it's going to look different between elementary, middle and high, but all the high schools, you know, principals need to be on, on one accord.
Well, and, and that, that kind of goes back to the, the executive summary that we're just talking about, which really is the kind of a shorthand version of this whole long policy that I think is really usable for not only our principals and APs, but also, you know, teachers in the classroom to share with them as well as with our parents. So to your immediate question about consistency, Dr. Jordan, several observations. One, to my knowledge, you know, we've never had a policy this specific that's countywide that governs cellphone expectations. So we certainly never had a law that required it either. So that's going to be new. The other piece is, again, as I mentioned, you know, we are going to begin at principals' leadership tomorrow in sharing the executive summary and walking them through that, the principals, then followed by assistant principals. And I think your point is a good one because we know that a lot of the complaints that we've had in the past about cell phones in the schools and whatnot is because of perceived inconsistency between schools. And so you've given me food for thought with my little bit of time with the principals tomorrow that, you know, a great way for them to be able to keep the main thing, the main thing, and focus on, you know, being instructional leaders and not get bogged down in these issues is, you know, let's all try to stick to the district playbook. That's your friend to keep you out of those conversations about, well, my child at this, and this, you know, and their cousin at this middle school, this, you know. Because we've had, you know, we have a lot of that, we've had a lot of that. So I, I see this as, as a tool, again, for, you know, really trying to, to be more consistent. And my extension, allow teachers and principals and APs to keep the main thing, the main thing.
So are they going to offer like the, as they say, like you just said, a playbook on exactly how to, like, see if I'm a teacher, I'm standing in the classroom, somebody, their phone go off, what do I do, you know, those type of things?
Looks like the playbook is already on the executive summary.
I think that, you know, I, I'll speak for the, I don't want to speak for the author, but I think that was clearly.
I just want, I know, I just, you know.
I'm with you.
I'm assuming, and if I'm wrong, please tell me, that the area superintendents will participate and make sure that they stay on track.
I mean, I'm, I'm just, I, 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 I'm just telling you, I, and he, like you said, I know that it's going to be like, oh, well, so and so is doing it at this school, then so I'm doing it at this school, and so, you know, we have that. You know what's going to happen and, and I already know, you know.
Positivity.
Yes, so we just want to, I just want to make sure that, you know, if somebody's looking at this, you know, we, we're looking, we're, we're being transparent and saying, hey, we're rolling this out and this is the way it's going to look in every school. And hopefully this is, you know, making sure our principals and stuff is going to.
This is a consider.
Yeah, and I like, to that point, I'd like to make a motion for temporary approval on first reading of the new policy forty-three eighteen, student use of cell phones and other personal wireless communication devices.
I second that motion. We have a motion, just to, second by Ms. Musgrave.
Thank you.
One point zero seven is to consider approval of revised policy sixty-four oh one, ethics in purchasing function.
Thank you, Ms. Musgrave. This is the policy I mentioned earlier that had not been revised for some time. But again, I just, I took the opportunity to basically fold the board's conflict of interest policy into this policy. So it's sort of duplicative, but I feel like if, if we have something with that title on it, it needs to be very clear that we got the same expectations in both sides of the policy manual house that we, again, to oversimplify, but basically, we don't want people handling contracts or handling. And you'll see at the bottom of page one of this section what I mean when I talk about expanding the definition of immediate family. The Cumberland County definition that's been in your policy 7730 for some time includes a parent, a child, a brother, a sister, a grandparent or grandchild, and includes step half and in-law relationships. So again, that goes further than what the law requires, but it's intended to try to eliminate as many questions as possible about the ethics of what we do around here.
Other questions? All right. I have a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised policy, ethics, and the purchasing function.
Motion back, Mr. West, second back, Ms. Brown. Second vote.
Questionnaire.
1.08 is to receive new regulation 3520-r on proper display and handling the flags.
Thank you, Ms. Musgrave. You all may recall, you all received a public comment, I want to say at your June meeting, about this very issue. And, you know, in full transparency, and Dr. Fields will back me up on this, this this was not an issue that was was isolated to that particular school or or speaker. We heard numerous concerns from time to time last year about the way flags were treated, particularly when they're being taken down at schools, when, you know, a lot of times you have folks in car lines, or they're observing it. And, you know, we pride ourselves on being a military-friendly and supportive school district. We've got a lot of veterans and and people for whom this is a heartfelt issue in our community, and so we felt like it was better to just go ahead and have a a specific administrative regulation that will be part of the policy manual. It doesn't require you all to act on it, but it will become part of the policy manual, and this is another item we're going to speak to principals and assistant principals about this week, just for, just as a receive.
Yes.
Hey, Nick, can I just add, I think the understanding is flag, or the protocol is flags should be lit if they're up at night.
Right.
And I'm not sure, but I suspect on some of our ball fields, they're not being taken up and down daily, I think. And I'm not sure, but I sense that, and I know the ones in front of the school are more visible and noticed, so you may want to stress that at at the same, at the same time, that I don't, I think we probably have some places where they're staying up 24/7 and not being lit.
I I appreciate you flagging that, pardon the pun, because I I guess, you know, my book, I I've been so dialed in on the idea of the, you know, the person in the car line seeing the pool right out in front of the school, but that's a great reminder that we do have flags other places. And the lighting piece, it doesn't specifically mention that, but we do tie in all that DOAA guidance, so message received.
Thank you.
1.09 is to consider other committee concerns. They're not, so we will adjourn.
Gee, my fourth committee, I'm tired. I will call the Budget Finance Committee meeting to order. That committee is myself, Ms. Bell, Ms. Musgrave, and Ms. Warner. And Jay is with us to get started. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
To make a motion, second.
Thank you, Ms. Bell, with the motion, and Ms. Warner with the second, to adopt the agenda 1.02. If you should have joined the meeting, if you haven't, you have, it looks like. Thank you, and 1.03.
Motion to adopt, motion to approve the Budget Finance Committee meetings.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Warner, for the motion, and Ms. Bell, for the second of 1.03.
Questionnaire.
Thank you, Linda. That brings us to 1.04. Jay, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. West. Yes, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I will admit, the the initial idea for this presentation was going to talk about how the district plans to deal with the funding freeze, the federal funding freeze. But as you all know, those funds have been unfrozen, so we wanted to go ahead and give you a broader update. So as you see before you, fiscal year in '26, the funds have been released as thought, as we had thought for all federal funds, and so now we're focusing on fiscal year in '27. And so what I mean by that is similar to how our state does the budgeting process. At the federal level, the president releases his budget first, and then the Senate and House weigh in. When the when the president released his budget, they looked, they didn't touch Title I, they held that flat. They looked at EC federal funding, and they, there was some consolidation, but for all necessary purposes, that funding was held flat. Then they took the other 18 federal programs, $6.2 billion, and then lumped that into one block grant, and then made that total $2 billion. So it went from $6.2 billion to $2 billion. And then they're going to, if the president's budget is passed, they will allocate that to the states as a block grant. And so what that means is the state will have far more jurisdiction on how that money is spent. So of course, we're still in the first process of the budget at the federal level, but I wanted to give you all a heads up. So that is obviously a significant cut from $6.2 billion down to $2 billion. And so that's really looking at our Title II, which is professional development, and we have some teacher reduction, some teacher, teaching positions that we look for classroom reduction in our Title III, which is English learner services, and Title IV, which is student support and academic enrichment. So as we hear more, we'll probably get the final verdict October, November-ish, we'll come back to the board and and let the board know what our plan is moving forward with the less, with the the smallest impact to our, to educating our students. So may pause there before I go on to state any questions about that. So next, we have the state budget, which the budget in in its entirety is on hold, but they're they're passing what we call mini-bills or mini-budgets. And so the the reason why the whole budget is on hold is there's there's two major things. One, the the House and the Senate are unable to agree on the amount of tax cuts. There was an agreement made last year where they would cut taxes this year and cut, and this is state income tax, they would cut state income tax this year and state income tax next year. When the budget, when the projections came in, there was forecasted to be about a billion-dollar shortfall going into next year's state budget. The House said they would like to pause the state income tax cuts. The Senate said, no, we already have an agreement in place to do this for the next two years. And then that's where kind of the impasse has happened at the the income tax. There's also a disagreement on teacher and state employee salaries. Now, there are some things that they can agree on, and so you'll see that stuff start to pass in these in these mini-bills. And so as you all recall, in June, you all adopted a state budget for this year, and it was based on our planning allotments. And once the the first initial mini-budget is passed, then that will allocate the funding to fulfill that whole budget that we've already approved. So with that, we're still waiting on any type of salary increases for our teachers, classified staff, basically, everybody's, everybody in the school district. Any questions about that? All right, so on the local level, we have that, has been all, that cake has been baked, and we've we've had some some success with that. Now, as you all recall, the the major part of that funding, or additional funding from the county, has to do with teacher supplements. And so our teacher supplement is not a percentage base. You'll see some districts that say our supplement is X percent, where ours is the actual dollar amount, and we tailor that dollar amount to the teacher salary scale. Because over the past few years, the teachers with the most experience have got the least amount of raises. So you'll see a teacher supplement for a teacher that has more years of experience will be higher than a teacher with few years of experience. And so the process with that is Mr. Reyes and I, once we get the updated teacher salaries, then we will reconcile that back to the supplement, bring it back to committee, either HR finance, and then it would go to full board for approval. But since we don't have those teacher scales, and nobody has said, because sometimes the state will say, nobody's getting a raise, and and then we can work with that, too, but nobody has said either way. So we're kind of in limbo, waiting to finalize that teacher supplement scale. And of course, the classified is pretty cut and dry, because it went from 2% to 6%, and and then we just run the arithmetic on the employee salaries. So everything's going good there, we're just waiting on that teacher scale and somebody or the state to give us direction. Questions about that? Okay, finally, we have capital. Once again, we got some great news there from the county with the $460 million worth of support over seven years. We're still having internal meetings, because even though we'll get that $460 million over seven years, they are going to finance a significant amount of that, probably over 20 years. And so, excuse me, it's up to the county to decide whether they want to, how they want to issue or finance that debt. And so I believe they'll have some meetings early fall about how that will work, and then they'll get with us, and we'll update the board and and give them the board and everybody plans on moving forward.
Great, good report. Any comments? 1.45, multifunction device cost per copy.
Okay, so this is, this is our copiers, basically. And so at the, we we lease the copiers and we pay on a per-copy basis. And so at the departments, we'll basically, we bill the departments and the schools for the copies they use. So that's the practical matter of how this works. This is an agreement with Sistel for the next five years. They held pricing flat, so our recommendation is to approve this agreement moving forward.
Any questions?
Do we, do we look for other other companies, or do we, did we bidding this contract?
We did not bid it out, since the cost remains flat.
This is a five-year contract.
Do you think you could have gotten cheaper?
What's that, yes, ma'am?
Because you didn't bid it out, do you think you could have gotten cheaper? Just because you, we kept it because it stayed flat?
I did not think so, because if, and I don't mean to sound, that's would have been the recommendation to bid it out. And in my experience, just like we've been talking all day, right, this is a big district. And so to go in and and if another vendor were to win and say they'd come in a half cent cheaper or something like that, is it worth tearing all the copiers out of the district, out of the schools, out of all the departments, and then inserting new copiers and things like that? Even if we could have got it a little bit less expensive, something that I would look at is like opportunity cost or time lost, I think it wouldn't have made the game material. So especially if they would have raised costs, it's different. But since they kept it flat, I felt very confident.
And I'll just just add that it takes a large company to service this district, and that's a multi-state company based in Fayetteville, too. So for that reason, I'll make a motion to approve the multifunction device cost per copy program. Motion made by me, Linda, with a second by Ms. Musgrave.
Questionnaire.
1.06.
All right, next, so this is for so just said, and what this is, this is our ERPR, enterprise resource planning software, so it runs our accounts payable, our general ledger, payroll, purchasing, accounts receivable, all of our basic accounting functions. It's $395,000, and $395,554 annually. My recommendation is to approve this contract, as we are, to be honest, we are looking to modernize our ERP system, but we're not in a position to do that right now.
Questions? Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve for Sunpac Gail's 400 software subscription and licensing.
A second. Motion by Ms. Bell, a second by Ms. Musgrave, for 1.06.
Questionnaire.
Thank you all, received the report on the surplus property from first half of the year.
Any questions? All the vehicles are done through the deals, the mobile and scrap metal, we have longstanding agreements with those companies to to come get this, and then this is just a receive item for the board's information.
Any questions, comments? 1.08, approval of the Crown Coliseum Agreement for 2026 graduations.
Next, before you, you have the contract for for Crown Coliseum for our graduations. I phoned a friend to help me. I'll say that I think, you know, we talk internally, it's a blessing that we can have all the graduations at one place. So go ahead.
And if I may before, I asked for money to pay for next year's graduations. Thank you all. They were long days, but memorable ones, and you made it more memorable by your presence. So I think we had an opportunity to engage in between, which was very, very nice, and our our students and our families, our our school staff just really appreciate all of your, all of you being there and sharing that with us. I think if your ears were like mine, they probably rang popping circumstance for at least a week, but it's a beautiful, a beautiful, beautiful thing. We call that the Super Bowl of education, and being able to see our graduates cross the finish line is something that I know I'll always cherish. So we do have for you today the request for the renewal of a contract with the Crown for 17 graduation ceremonies, 17 rehearsals to be held between May 20th and June 11th at a cost of $153,000. And I'm.
This, I always get this question, so I'm just going to ask it out loud in case somebody's listening. The question I always get is, why are the small schools, and I've already asked, talked to you about this, but why do the small schools have it there? Why don't they have it in a more intimate facility? And I'll let you answer that.
Pre-COVID, we did utilize the Fayetteville State, the auditorium at Fayetteville State, and there was not really any cost savings there. We had issues with finding enough parking. Families were not given the number of tickets that they would be, so a small school being in a more intimate location is not going to get the number of tickets that they would in a large school, in a larger venue. So when COVID came about, did I do that? Okay, no. When COVID came about, we had to, you know, maintain that social distancing for all schools and move to the Crown, and the feedback that we received from the schools, from families, is that even though, I mean, it it, they look little in there, they appreciate the opportunity to have the Jumbotron and the the experience that the larger schools would have, being able to, you know, offer the tickets at the same number as a larger school as well. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Did the price go up, was it $125?
It did go up $7,225, which is about $425 per graduation ceremony. The internal cost, they project in in terms of mostly their employees, they provide a lot of employees to help us make sure things run smoothly, their staff, one personnel.
I thought it was.
Yes, ma'am.
Get with them.
Dress appropriately.
We try, we try. Sure, wear the winter coat.
Any other questions? I'll just add that it was, I think it went up very smoothly this year, and are no complaints. So anyway, thank you all. Is there a motion to approve contract?
I'll make a motion to approve the Crown Coliseum Agreement for 2026 graduation.
Question.
Thank you. Any other committee concerns? And with that, the most efficient committee is adjourned.
Jay's going to take that.
Prove me otherwise.
I did that in record time.
That was a tribute to Mount Eeyah.
being able to, you know, offer the tickets at the same number as a a larger school as well. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Did the um price go up? Was it a hundred?
It it did go up seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars, um which is about four hundred and twenty-five dollars per graduation ceremony. The internal cost um they project in in terms of mostly their employees. They provide a lot of employees to help us make sure things run smoothly, their staff one, um personnel.
Dress appropriately.
We try. We try. Sure, wear the winter coat.
Questions? I'll just add that it was uh, I think it went off very smoothly this year and um, or no complaints. So anyway, thank you all. Is there a motion to approve contract?
I'll make a motion to approve the um Crown Coliseum Agreement for twenty twenty-six graduation.
Thank you. Most by Ms. Bell, a second with Ms. Musgrave. Thank you. Any other committee concerns? And with that, the most efficient committee is adjourned.
Jay's gonna take that.
Prove me otherwise.
Did that in record time.
That was a tribute to Mount Eeyah.
It's not gonna take long, no one.
It's not gonna take long.
I want to look like Dr. Scott.
I'd like to call the committee together. Dr. Terry doing. Who's anybody, myself and Dr. Pink. I like uh one point zero two to consider Dr. Virginia. Need to approve.
My second.
Motion on this, we're in a second by Dr. Jordan. One point zero three is to consider approval of May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, the written committee meeting minutes.
Need to approve.
Motion.
My second.
Ms. Williams, second by Dr. Jordan. Let's vote. Thank you. One point zero four is a receive item, a clear bag proposal for Cumberland County athletic events.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Um Mr. Barber and I are here this morning to share some updates with you about student activities um that are going to be affecting our twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The first um initiative that we are going to bring to the board is our new clear bag procedure for CCS athletic events. And um Mr. Barber's going to share with you some information about um the plan um for this year and how we want to make sure. Again, safety is a really big issue and making sure that we're continuing to do the things in the best interest of our students and staff and community. And so we want to share this clear bag.
So in Cumberland County Schools, uh we're committed to having an exceptional and safe environment at all athletic events. After speaking with athletic directors, they had concerns about efficiencies and ways to further enhance safety at athletic events. They proposed a clear bag policy, um and it was unanimous um amongst athletic directors. So then we took this um initiative to cabinet. And the cabinet felt we should move forward with this, but we want to present to the board today. So to answer any questions that you may have. So clear bag procedures, enhanced security measures that are already in place at at athletic events. We currently use open gate weapons detection systems. Um clear bag procedures would also decrease wait times to get into ballgames. In the past, CCS employees working security would have to go through several large bags, which causes major delays, especially at big football games. One that I can recall is Terry Sanford and K Fear last year in the lines where some people didn't get in until halftime. Good, that's an extra layer of security. And we are already using these uh procedures at Cumberland County Schools events such as graduation. So each attendee um would be able to bring one clear bag, no larger than twelve by six by twelve. In addition to um one clear bag, attendees may carry a small clutch, clear clutch on their wrist, um no larger than four and a half by six and a half. Bags containing medically necessary items for the attendees assistance, i.e. oxygen tanks, diaper bags with an accompanying child. The clear one gallon Ziploc bag will also be an acceptable clear bag at our at our events. Each attendee is um permitted to bring the following loose items, as long as any compartments capable of storage are left open and are empty. Coats, blankets, soft baby carriers, slings, strollers, medically necessary equipment, oxygen tanks, wheelchairs, walkers. So there are several districts across the state that are already using a clear clear bag procedures. And I've spoken with um some of those districts and they have um given good feedback as far as the policy. So during the month of August, we'll provide parent link scripts for schools to share with families. Work um work with communications to include messaging on school websites and need to know updates. Create messaging for media outlets. Um student activities will purchase signs for schools to publicize the clear bag expectations. Student activities will also purchase one gallon clear bags um for for patrons that may not have a clear bag. And they can transfer the stuff that they need into the clear bag and leave the um solid colored bag in the in the car. Our plan is to begin implementing the clear bag procedures on August twenty-second, which is our first football night. Uh then this also gives us time to communicate to the stakeholders as well. Now and now we'll take any questions that you may have.
I'm assuming that we're going to start like tomorrow.
Yes.
With the script and getting the word out since football's getting ready to start, that you'll have those parents. Well, I didn't know.
Yes, we wanted to make sure the board was aware. Um but it is our plan to begin um communicating that to our school leadership as well as all of our sources to the community ASAP.
And this is it. All events.
All athletic.
All athletic.
Yes, it it uh some of the events will start prior to August twenty-second. And we will instruct our our people working the gates to let the 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 patrons know when they come in. Starting August twenty-second, we're moving to a clear back policy. This will give everybody time to adjust.
That's fair enough. Other questions? Thank you for your report.
That's a receive item. Uh one point zero five is to receive North Carolina High School Athletic Association, approve its policy update.
Absolutely. Won't be before you long again. Um but we just want to make sure that we are communicating with you all exactly um what is happening, not only locally, but according to all of the different outlets that athletics has to um abide by. So there have been some changes with the attendance policies and regulations with the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. And our athletic directors in schools had to adjust to make sure that we were in alignment with the protocols that the state has set forth. So Mr. Barber's going to share with you those updates and what that looks like. And I just always want to preface and say, our goal is always to keep our students involved, happy and healthy. And one great thing about this is that it's going to help more students to be able to be active and participate in athletics. I don't want to steal your thunder, but um I think this is a is a positive. Um and so he's going to share some information with you just to give you an update.
So in Cumberland County, we're committed to successful students. Policy code thirty-six twenty states that all students must be present eighty-five percent of instructional time to include no more than fifty-four periods of instruction to be eligible for participation in athletics. So in January twenty twenty-five, the NCHSA began enforcing the attendance policy statewide. And it was up to the LEA to decide attendance rules for the eligibility prior to that. We have always stayed consistent with eighty-five percent and fifty-four period maximum. Anything over fifty-four fifty-four periods in the past required an attendance waiver request through the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. So the NCHSA policy being enforced calculates instructional days, not periods. We still use period attendance in Cumberland County Schools because we don't go to home rooms at high school. But things are changing in the way that we have to calculate this. And this is what we're trying to inform you of. So the state policy now says days. So we met with um Brad Offerd um with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Athletics Office in in June. And he told us that we had to find a way with each school district to equate absences to school days and not periods. Therefore, the way we we were doing it in the past was wrong. So by their policy, it states for a student to be present, they must be in school for fifty percent of the instructional day. If they are present for fifty percent of the instructional day, that means they are absent, they're they're present and not counted on, and that counts as them being in attendance, even if they miss the last two periods for the day. So they have to be in in school for fifty percent of the instructional minutes. So what we're doing now is we are going to um use a period uh a report in Infinite Campus. It's called the um student daily attendance detail. The athletic directors will run that daily attendance detail on each student. And it calculates the days of of missed that they've missed instead of the periods. So we're going away from fifty-four periods to days. So this um this current semester, fourteen is a max that you can miss. Go on to the next one. But the NCHSA has changed their waiver policy to unexcused absences. We it was normally interpreted an absence as an absence. So now, basically, if a child does not have more than fifteen unexcused absences, they are academically eligible for sports. So essentially, if a kid has fourteen excused absences and one unexcused, he's still eligible because it's it goes on excused absences at the state level. They say the LEAs have already excused those, so they are only concerning themselves with waivers for the unexcused.
And we have already initiated this because, as you know, football season is already started. Um and so Mr. Barber has already met with the athletic directors to um give them directions on pulling the appropriate reports in Infinite Campus, making sure they go back and double check to make sure that all of the students who might have been deemed ineligible, they have done a double check to make sure that those students now follow this new policy and have been able to start participating, those types of things. So we are already in alignment with this new policy from the state board. Um so we are good to go from here on out. And our athletic directors have already been trained and started using this process.
And it's changed twice this this summer. The NCHSA announced at our um July meeting in the um the Coach's Clinic that um the policy on unexcused absences. So it's um an ever-adapting policy um this summer.
Any questions?
So just to recap for me, the NC, you only get a waiver for unexcused absences. But the eligibility factors, excused and unexcused, right? So a kid can have fourteen excused absences and still play. And who who at the school level approves whether it's excused or unexcused? Who accepts the quality of the excuse?
Okay, that that is up to the school. Um they turn their their notes into the school. Um doctor's notes, um sick notes from parents and things of that nature. So we will, we we stress to the athletic directors already the importance of documenting each absence when a when a child is out.
Okay. Last question is, I'm sorry, it was Nick, he referenced policy code thirty-six twenty in the in the first slide. Do we need to check, update that soon?
We're going to look at that.
Okay, all right.
I mean, as long as we're compliant with state policy, we're we're legal. But yeah, that's definitely on me agenda.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Reading is, it almost looks like I can miss fifteen excused absences and I can miss less than fifteen excused absences and still be eligible to play. So actually, I could be absent from school twenty-nine days and still play ball.
And as long as fifteen of them are excused, they are eligible.
No, no, this may be something that y'all want to go back and look at, you know, as.
Because this is by semester, which means I could actually miss fifty-eight days for the whole school year and still be eligible.
And then once it gets over fifteen, over fourteen unexcused absences, that's when you have to submit an appeal to the state.
And I'm sorry, that's my concern would be is, but it is possible for me to to miss that much school and still be able to play ball if I've got fifteen excused.
Right. And the the and I was at his previous athletic director meeting and the discussion and the conversation is students need to be in school. And so that's what the ADs in their parent meetings and all those things are pressing and communicating, that be in school, don't try to, you know, use it, trying to find an outlet or something to to miss. But we are pushing being present in school o- every day if possible to make sure that they are getting the instruction on top of their eligibility.
Ms. Musgrave, if I can add, um and so I talk, I referenced that revised attendance policy that we're implementing. And so that adds a layer of um sanctions for students. So while that might be true for the attendance policy, our board, our board attendance policy for the district um talks about if students miss um more than twenty unexcused absences, then they may not pass the course. Or they may be, um they may not be promoted. So there's still the board policy regarding academic promotion and retention that we're beginning to implement, that we began implementation of in January of last year.
The only other thing is if they're not in attendance at school, they cannot practice. So I I'm thinking from a, I'm coming from the cultural arts. If I've got a marching band and I've got people who are absent that day and can't practice, I'm going to be on top of in getting them there. And I would think coaches would be able to help us with that in some situations. I'm not saying it's a catch-all, but and that was my other question was, don't we have something in place about course? Just what Melody just talked about, passing the courses, so.
And that that academic piece is still in place. So the classes that have to be passed and all those things, that has not changed.
But to Susan's point, they're there for half of the day. They can probably, that's the magic.
Accountable, isn't it? And we have things in our athletics handbook that that states that the parents have to acknowledge. And and this is something that, you know, I I ask because personally, you know, fifty-four periods is a good way to me uh of of looking at this. But we can't be more restrictive on the the way that we calculate it. It has to be days.
Okay, other questions?
Thank you.
One point zero six is to consider approval of Cisco Smartnet renewal through September twenty twenty-six for continued district IT network infrastructure support.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well.
So with this, it's the only consider item that we're bringing to the uh meeting this morning. So our district currently supports four thousand nine hundred and forty-eight wireless access points and nine hundred and forty-eight Cisco switches and routers. This software support agreement provides direct phone, chat, and email access to certified Cisco experts for advanced troubleshooting and technical assistance should my team need it. It also ensures that we have access to replacement hardware if needed, enables us to install the latest. enables us to install the latest security patches and operating system updates to keep our network secure and up to date. This quote was generated using the State IT Contract 204X, which affords districts the highest level of support at the lowest cost of support. So what I would like to have you consider, if, um, thank you, sir, is renewing this for $126,649.25. Please note that this price reflects a cost increase this year of $363.85 from last year's renewal price. But overall, we're still operating at a decrease of $21,636.15 from the renewal cost from the '23, '24 school year. So even though it's off the State IT contract, we still work with our members to try and secure even better pricing than what is allowed through the state contract. And so far, we've been able to do that throughout the few years. So if there's any questions about this, I'll be happy to entertain those at this time.
Other question? This is a consider item. A second. Motion to approve by Ms. Williams, second by Dr. Joy. Let's take a vote. I know, I was trying to, it wouldn't, let me.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Our 1.07 is to consider other committee concerns. Share with us. Alright, we were so precise and clear today.
Yes.
Interican.
I agree.
Thank you.
You're totally good.
Miss adjourned.
Yes. And we're gonna show you how you really do this.
Okay.
Here comes efficiency. Oh goodness. I'll call the Personnel Committee to order, and it'll be myself. Dr. Hills is not with us today, Ms. Musgrave and Ms. Warner, so y'all be on point over there. 1.02, consider adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. And I'm gonna second it. She's on top of it right there, but. And we'll take a vote in a minute. She's raising her hand. That means.
That's unanimous.
There you go. 1.03, consider approval of the May 29, 2025 Personnel Committee Meeting Minutes.
Motion to approve Committee Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Okay, hang on, Ms. Linda's over here.
Thank you.
Alright, Linda, that was Ms. Warner for motion and Ms. Musgrave for the second. And we'll take a vote.
That's unanimous.
Okay, 1.04, consider approval of personnel. And Ruben, how are you?
I'm doing well. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. And this is our traditional list. I didn't see anything that concerned me. Anybody have a concern that you saw? I don't call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Warner.
Second.
And Ms. Musgrave is on the second.
Motion second.
1.05, consider approval of leave of absence request and special leave of absence request. And again, this is, we see this just about every month.
This is our standard. The first, the first list are those that are on medical leave. And then the second list was one individual who was doing their student teaching in the fall.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. Warner. Take a vote.
Motion second.
Okay, 1.06, CCS District Organizational Chart. This one just about blinded me, but I did get through all the way to the end. Ruben?
Yes, ma'am. So by policy, annually, we provide the board with a updated organizational chart. And so that information here is, is provided for the board, which outlines the organizational structure for the district and within each department.
I'm sorry, I was, there was something, I was going, Deanna?
With this chart, I have to go to Ozzie Services under Transportation. I think we need a couple of adjustments because there's a couple of names on here. They're no longer in that department.
There are some vacancies. I mean, any comments about those? Are those anticipated being filled or are we on hold?
Yeah, so, so we may have actually, we may be hiring for those in the process. But, you know, this document, we, we hire, it's like an in and out. And so we wanted to, you know, we, we typically provide it in August, so we provide that at this point in time. And so there may be some holes that you will see recommendations coming to the board in the future. Yes, ma'am.
Anybody have any questions? Alright, thank you. 1.07, consider approval of administrative recommendation.
So the, the item before you is one position in human resources. I provided the information for the recommended candidate, the job description, as well as the resume, which is our standard practice for, for these types of positions. I'll just ask for the board's consideration.
Okay. Any questions or? Everybody? Everybody's good? Everybody's good? We'll call for a motion.
Motion to consider approval of administrative recommendations.
Second.
Okay, and we'll take a vote. 1.08, consider motion to go into closed session to preserve the confidentiality of matters protected from disclosure pursuant to GS 115C-319 and GS 143-31811A1 and to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to NCGS 143-31811A3. And I'll make that a motion. Can I get a second? Second from Ms. Musgrave.
That's unanimous.
Okay, and we're in closed session.
There's nothing in my chair. There's nothing in my chair. Okay, all right. I make a motion to come out of closed session. Let's vote. Right. 1.10, receive superintendent's administrative transfers.
On behalf of the superintendent just announcing as a received item one administrative transfer, Dr. Kristin Etchison, current principal at Luther Newt Geralds would be transferred to 71st Classical Middle School.
And 1.11, consider approval of superintendent's administrative recommendations.
On behalf of the superintendent, I'd like to request approval of the administrative recommendations discussed in the closed session.
All right. And we need a motion. Motion by Ms. Musgrave. Second. Second by Ms. Warner. Yes, ma'am. And 1.12, consider other committee concerns. Ruben?
I would just like to take a point of privilege just to recognize the staff that we have in human resources. We've been working very hard over the summer to hire as many individuals we can to fill our vacancies. Currently, as of this morning, we sit at 80 certified vacancies that went down since just this morning. Over the course of May to August 5th, we have processed 1,144 hires. These are returning employees and new employees. And just over the last 30 days, we've hired 300 new employees. And so I want to recognize my team for the work that they're doing. They're working a lot of evenings and weekends to get this ready for school. So I just want to take that.
And we appreciate you more than you know. Are there any other committee concerns? Right. And I'll adjourn the personnel committee.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Remember tonight we have, starting at 4, is a meet and greet in the superintendent's swearing-in. And our next regular board meeting is 12th May. Uh, May. August, I stand corrected, 12th August. At 6 o'clock. This meeting is now adjourned.